Okay, it's April 3rd, 2024. We're going to start the Town of Sangueville Select Board meeting. It's four o'clock. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two, we usually have an open session and usually there's only one or two people here, but Bruce McNauton is listed, so Bruce, is he here?
Are you?
Did you want to speak?
Yeah, we came in, actually, most of us here came in last fall, late fall, filled Kenny's property that abuts the town's property. He's closed everybody off and that's open to the public. And you said that you were, we were told last fall that you weren't going to do anything until the spring. Spring is here. Hunting season is coming up in about three weeks. And I know myself and some others would like to have access to that, to the town property. We'd like to know what the town's going to do about it.
The town hasn't, he did come see us, I think after you were here. And he said that, well, he didn't say exactly that he would give us, he said if the town had a need, like harvesting wood, for example, that's something he would talk to us about. But that's all he has said to us. I know some of the abutters got letters from him. They're working out access to their own property, but we haven't got anything like that.
The Town of Sangueville, there's only three owners down there.
Yeah, we did not get anything like that.
I've spoken with his attorney directly and he claims that the town has no, has no claim on access to their property.
Or use of that road.
Right.
Yeah, that's kind of the way he explained it to us.
Like, I would like to know on record, what are you all going to do about it? We should have, all of us should have access to that property, drive right to it as we so chose.
So far, we, the only avenue that we would be aware of would be litigation.
And?
Because we don't own his, he owns that land and he's saying we don't have a right to use it, nor does anybody else, that's what he's saying.
We did ask, we did ask Patrick to reach out to that federal agency that's behind that property to see if they've dealt with this in the past or what their options are. I don't know if he did.
Accessing in the opposite direction.
No, just for this case right here. We can't be the only town that's ever dealt with this. So there's millions of acres that fall under that same bucket that's in that group. So Patrick was supposed to reach out to them to see what is the course of action for us or how do you, how do they handle these situations in the past? I don't know if he did or he didn't.
Well, we've contacted Susan Collins' office to go that route also. We've heard nothing back yet, but we're pursuing those avenues. But again, I'd like to know, is the town going to defend the town property and access to it?
Currently, there's, there's nothing budgeted to do that.
Is it going to be?
We haven't had a town meeting yet. We have, if, honestly, there's a lot of competition for town funds right now, so that hasn't been at the very top of the list, but.
Well, he's, he's biding his time and we don't have a lot of time.
You mean for hunting season?
No, because if the town doesn't take any action, the town is going to get shut out. That's why he's got the gate up now. He's depending on nobody doing anything, including Mr. New here. And that's why I believe it's the towns should go and do something.
Yeah, well, and that's certainly an opinion, but right now, to answer your question, there isn't an article for funding for litigation. We haven't even sought an estimate as to what that might be. Yes, sir. What's your name first?
Tom Warren.
Thank you, Tom.
One of the issues is we've been trying to get more information and understanding that the town's going through a lot of transition. There's been two or three people in charge of the governance of the town, but you know, the solution I think would include maybe sitting down with a couple of us and exploring this. We've gone through multiple times asking for information, records from the town. For example, when was that? We know when the road was, we don't know whether officially abandoned or just discontinued and when that happened, what the records are. And in order to, it seems like there's an obligation in the town to sit down with some interested citizens that feel they have, they're losing out on access to town property. And that, we ought to sit down and say, hey, what are our options? What do we need to explore? What can we do? We say, well, you know, we heard there's no money. Well, that's valuable woodland, woodlot. It can be harvested and the money can be used to give the town some options. So we, we just want to get on square one, to sit down and have a conversation and explore what options there are and what can we do? What can we explore? Who can look this up? Who can make this contact? The Department of Transportation has resources about abandoned and discontinued roads and access. The state had just developed a commission to deal with this because they're inundated with these kind of, these kind of problems. And, and the landowners have gotten a letter from a lawyer. The town hasn't, but, so the town should call up the lawyer and say, look, what's happening here? And we need a letter because you're blocking access to our land. And I think it's the obligation of the town governors to say, look, we need to look out for our interests here. We can't just throw up a hand and say, we got plenty, too much to do. We got too, we have too many people wanting us to spend money on other things. We at least have to explore it. And, and that's the frustration point, is, you know, we've made multiple attempts and I understand the town's been through some transition, but it's like, oh, I'll give you a call back. Well, I don't know anything about that. I made an appointment with Patrick and when I went in to make, to meet with him, he was You know, it's just, it's like, hey, does the town just skirt obligations here? I don't think so, but it certainly doesn't smell good in the long run because we've been stymied at all ends of the.
Well, if anybody's asked for a document, I'm not aware that anyone has withheld them. We don't, we don't have a letter from Mr. Kenny, so we couldn't give it to you. I think you, did you find the date that it was abandoned or was that Lorna that you, yeah?
I can speak to some of this.
Oh, that would be great.
Oh, that'd be.
So I don't know how the road was discontinued. Usually when a road is discontinued, it's discontinued to summer and winter maintenance. That doesn't mean you abandoned the road, I don't own it no more. So we need to find out when it was actually abandoned. In the letter that Mr. Kenny sent Mr. New, I think it said 1930 or something, the road was discontinued?
Nobody knows in fact if it was abandoned. I had the documents suggesting that three of the roads over there, that the town voted to, to discontinue, but we don't know for a fact that any action was ever taken.
Okay, so.
That's what went for Tom and I trying to find out.
Let's get back to the letter that got sent to Mr. New. The lawyer stated that it was discontinued in 1930. Well, I got some records from 1930 and it shows no discontinuance of any road in 1930. I have that document on my desk. So that would take some research for somebody to go down to the deeds and look and see how it was registered, how it was discontinued, if it got registered. I also contacted USDA, that's the forestry department. We went through several, several different departments to get to where you speak to the deed. And when you speak to the deed, it says public, public use, doesn't say public access. I do, the deed says public use. That doesn't mean the public has the right to go in and out of the land. That's not what it's saying. It's saying the wood could be cut and that money could be used to do something for the public. Now, like you mentioned, you could cut the wood and use the money to have a lawyer to find out how you can get in there. It's for public use, the land. So you could use stuff off the land whereby for the town as a whole is public use, not public access.
No, I don't think that at all.
So public use, whose interpretation is that? Is that a legal interpretation?
That was from USDA. They're the ones that had the deed, they looked at, they're the ones that gifted the land. Also on that, just because we abandoned the road or if we did, if we didn't abandon the road, doesn't mean we have to give the land back. That's, that's a false statement, if you ever heard that. We don't have to give that land back. The land is the Town of Sangueville's.
There's, there's two. Whether it's discontinued or abandoned has implications. So that needs to be determined very specifically. And in order to do that, you'd have to look at what's written down in the minutes of record of any meeting the town had about that issue.
If you could find a time date of when that was.
I thought we had that though. Somebody sent that to us. It was Lorna or somebody sent a date.
Yeah, we have it.
And what happens, if, if you discontinue a road today, a public easement remains. That's the state law now. But years ago, and I can't tell you the date, if you, if it wasn't the case, it referred to the landowner. And if you had a landowner east side of the road, then they owed to, owned to the middle of the road. And that's why he bought the other side of the road. So now he owns a whole road. But the, the letter that we received was that at a date that precluded the current status. So the land would revert to the abutters or the owner. That's, that's what we saw. So it looks, and I don't have that document in front of me, but we did see that in the last 12 months. Somebody dug it up.
That's what I guess is frustrating. Are we able to see that?
If we can put our hands on the document, you're welcome to have it.
And that's the issue, one of the issues is we just haven't been able to figure out.
I think it was sent to us in email.
Was it?
I think it was sent to us in an email.
In Butchland, it was in to see me and I showed him the deed.
Okay. I have the deed right here. Know exactly what it says.
I think it says back in 1929, all access and right of ways.
It was proposed, the three roads over there, the proposal to discontinue started in 37.
You got a copy of it right there?
Yeah, I have them all right here.
Can I see what it looks like?
Not this moment.
Okay.
The problem here is we're all talking about things that we know. I've done enough of our research. Again, I've spoken with his attorney face to face. I've spoken with another real estate attorney. I have another one who's an expert in all of this down Portland, ready to go. And that's why I asked, what, what has a town done? Has a town purposely spoken with a real estate attorney that knows this business?
No, the town has not done that. The town has not done that.
And is the town going to do something?
Well, again, the town would have to budget funds for that. And so we didn't do it this year because we had no funds for that. Going into next year, if that just ends up being a priority, we will have to budget funds for that. We probably should get an estimate before we decide what the article would look like. But we didn't have the capacity without a special town meeting to even address that. So that's, that's where we're at.
Because I thought the last time you guys was in here and you had that information, you guys was, I think it was you two was going to work with, share information with Patrick, what we had, what you had, and come up with something.
We tried to get with Patrick and Patrick left. I since followed up and just asked if I could get in and then I was told, and I understand, I'm not criticizing, that I get back to you. I haven't heard back from anyone. So it's just a matter of, hey, can we get together? Can we pull out all the documents that are, that are relevant to this situation and have a conversation on, look, what are there, are there any options and what process would we take? It just seems like there's an obligation of the town to see what in the best interest of the townspeople and taxpayers we, it's an asset of the town. And I think the town needs to look into every avenue to preserve that access to that land like it's been used for years, you know? There's, there are a lot of options. You guys know, you talk to a lawyer and there are a lot of options to pursue. And it might even be sitting down with the landowner and negotiating some type of reasonable agreement or something, just we, what's frustrating is that we can't just keep throwing a kicking a can down the road and not doing anything. And that's why we're here. We just want to have a dialogue. We'd like to sit down with some folks and discuss it further, map out who's going to do what, who's going to look into what, what options there might be. And I guess it'd be nice to leave here with a commitment that the town is willing to do this and enter into a two-way dialogue on it.
I would suggest that in preparation for the budget, that we at least have Jeff reach out to an attorney that's an expert in right of ways and that sort of thing and get an estimate as to what it might cost to address this. Then we can decide whether we're going to try to raise those funds or not. But that's.
And, and again, for me, in order of even us trying to do our own research, is if we have the facts, it would be a lot better because you're talking to a lawyer friend or a connection or somebody and you say, well, was it abandoned or discontinued? I don't know. What year was it? I don't know. What did the town records as recorded for that meeting say? I don't know. What did the Department of Agriculture, who gave the land to the town, were there any stipulations with that? I don't know. You know, so that's where we're at right now.
The problem with these things is we learn about them the same time you do.
Yes, it's not a criticism.
Right, it's just, we.
Well, I seriously thought you guys were still, that was part of what you did. I mean.
Patrick said he had a box full of all this information and he's renewed it. I asked for a meeting with him so I could be real sure. And then he's gone and I haven't been able to reestablish that.
Haven't seen the box, but my office is always open. You're more than welcome to come in. I show you the two deeds that I have because there's two deeds to that property and one deed lists different things that we have.
He said there was a box in the old, in the, the old town office, under the stair or somewhere. He pulled it out. Yeah. Yeah, so, so again, here's where I get with what the heck's people trying to hide here? Why would you say that if that doesn't exist and that, you know what I mean? So all right, it'd be a help if I could be with you and see what you have.
I'm straight up in the office, I'm going to tell you that's just the way it is, the facts and not going to hide anything.
No, I believe you.
I said that to a whole bunch of people, that, you know, I'm not going to take sides and anything, all of us could get together and do that don't cost us money, great. If we could all take a little pot and do something on our time, that's enough, that's, that's a reasonable offer, I think, so.
So you're, so I'm hearing that we can sit down with you and have a meeting and discuss the whole issue.
There is a document that addresses the date. I know it was emailed to us and which, if it is, I could still find it. But it, and I don't know whether it said discontinuance or abandonment, but when I, I just remember reading it and saying, well, that's, that date precedes the current status. And so I, I understood the argument his attorney was making, that's all. But I can't, I, beyond that, I don't recall.
Well, and his attorney's not, just like he, lawyer talked to me while I was sitting there. I'm a nice guy, it's a good meeting, but he's advocating for his client.
Sure.
The Town of Sangueville needs somebody to advocate for the Town of Sangueville.
Right. But the Town of Sangueville needs to know what that entails financially.
Yeah, I mean, we can't, yeah, we can't hire an attorney with open end, let's fight this to the end and, you know, so that.
No, there's two, there's two avenues. One is seeking an easement through prescriptive easement and the other one is eminent domain. That's the cleanest route, right there.
Yeah, you know more than I do. I don't know either one of those. I know.
See, that, that's what we like to do is explore some of those and if that's the potential, well, let's, let's, the town must have some legal, someone on retained to be able to ask a question or say, hey, look, here's the issue. What are our options? What do we do next? What do we need to find out without a cost and?
Real estate's a pretty specialized.
It is. We would, we definitely.
You'd want an expert. I'm sure he hired an expert.
Eventually, yeah, but he, yeah, that'd be a place to start.
Yep.
Well, that's one thing we've learned, that most of these resource, they are all specialized. So yes, we do have a couple of attorneys that are out there that we do use, but as far as like MMA, when you get into a lot of these type of questions, when you ask MMA, they're going to almost guarantee you steer, you need to speak with your town's attorney about that case. And then, you know, if you talk to our attorney, our attorney, from what I, we've used him for that I know of, isn't specialized in that type of thing. So we would be better off to find.
I have a guy.
That, then that would be very useful, honestly.
That was recommended by the guy that I deal with, who's very good in real estate, but he recommends a guy that deals with this sort of thing all the time.
Yep. Yeah, if you have a personnel matter, you do personal attorney.
He had the resources from DOT and State Commission, they can all feed in some information that can get us a lot further along and at least explore all the options we have and resources.
Back to the money issue, that land hasn't been cut in over 30, about 30 years. And the last time it was cut, all, there was just a chunk of wood that was cut off it. So there's all kinds of money just sitting there in stonage. Yeah, so.
For that, a forester could tell you.
Right, right.
Well, I think, is it Mr. Hall, the head of the committee for that?
Yeah, yeah.
For the town?
Yep, I think it was.
I just had one comment. I'm Ralph McDonald. Mr. Wilson knew his lived there his whole life, as most of us know, and that's going to be part of the precedent because he's lived there and utilized that his whole life, you know, as some of us, other people has too. You know, so if somebody comes in and buys it up and all of a sudden sews a gate on it, you know, when you set precedence, that pretty much says it right there.
That's for the fields, correct?
Yes.
Didn't he, did you get a, a letter saying you could use, use the fields? Didn't the lawyer send you a letter that you could use the fields?
Did the lawyer send you a letter to use the fields? Yes, he did. Stipulating how many times you could use it.
Cut it twice a year. He thinks he'd be generous and let me do it.
Twice a year. But you could get three crops out of it. You're going to do 10.
That's absolutely wrong. Absolutely wrong.
You know, paying taxes always like, almost the land is being told.
Right, but. Drive down there, drive there, you know, that's absolutely wrong. Whoever, whoever okayed him putting up a fence down there.
Nobody did.
They had no business doing that.
Nobody okayed it.
I don't agree with that either.
You don't need a permit to put it up.
Patrick met with him.
Well.
And shortly after that, the gate went up, as well as a mailbox that's on town prop, or cemetery property.
Well, that, no, we, they, we don't issue permits for gates.
What the heck have to do with issuing permits?
No, but I mean, he got no permission from the town.
Just can't pass a permission because that's what he was testing.
He didn't get permission from the town.
I think you find Patrick kind of walked away from it all.
But as far as other landowners, what we address isn't necessarily going to address their problem.
If, that's not necessarily so. If the town reestablished access to their land, that would mean that Wilson could travel that route to get to his land as well because it's on the land.
Not necessarily.
But well, he'd have better chance probably than anybody else because it's his land. He can't just put up a gate, tell people, that's your land.
Right, I, it seems that way. You're exactly right, but you've still got to win. I mean.
You know, I get it, I get it. But there's a lot of ways to get to that point if in fact we've got to bring it before court of law or pay a lawyer. There's a lot of options and a lot of research we need to do, including up to what would it take financially?
That's really.
Maybe logging the property would generate enough revenue to support it and it would be a good cause for the town. Who knows? But we have to explore some of these things and take some action, take steps. We just can't get to the next step, it seems right now. We're just, you know, we're, we're stuck and we, in a meeting with, with you or a committee or somebody to discuss this and put up a game plan would be, I think, beneficial and the right thing to do.
Does it seem reasonable, the first step is to figure out what this endeavor might cost? So then we could seek the funds to do that.
Yeah, there's a bit of a, is the cart before the horse, you know? You've got to collect all your facts.
You're not going to talk to attorney very much without money.
Yeah, it wouldn't hurt.
No, but Tom, what you're saying is you're having trouble just gathering all of the, the historical information about that road.
Right. I've gone to a number of resources, called the Department of Transportation, talked to the state, talked to Senator Collins' office, and, and I get a fair amount of questions. I don't have any answers because I can't get access to the info. So that is the first step, yes. That would be helpful in the process.
It, I mean, it is a certain skill to be able to do that, that research, just sitting there and digging through and reading document after document after document. I mean, I, we're not standing in the way of anybody doing that. And it just depends on, Jeff, yeah, money, just as far as time, as far as Jeff was working on it, but I mean.
Well, Tom and I, Tom and I do the research. We just need access to the paperwork.
We, we just have to put our hands on it, I guess. I mean, 1939 is what we're talking about?
I can give, I can give Jeff the information.
Okay, all right.
With the best bet would be just to contact you, you know, make an appointment or something.
I'd say anytime, just walk in, I'm there every day, unless someone comes out, but usually not much.
After 2:00.
After 2:00.
After 2:00.
Yeah, I work full-time guildman.
So you're there after 2:00?
Yeah. We can have a timeframe of roughly what we're looking for, where we're looking. And there's some, there's some local people too. Tom Glatte, he's real estate for a long time. He can tell you a lot of stuff.
Is there any mechanism for the town to connect with other towns across the state and say, have you dealt with an issue similar to this? Sometimes you can learn a lot from people. Oh, yeah, sure, this is, this is.
Every situation, what I've found, because I have a situation on my own road that I own, every town is different. Every story for these roads is different. And so they, they're kind of a one-off, every single one of them. You know, if you happen on the same situation, you're really lucky. But I know that I spent a lot of money with an attorney to, to straighten it up and, and get everybody on the same page.
We had an issue on the Grant Road, you know, it goes towards Park and a, a landowner put up a gate. And someone who was being denied access wanted the town to take down the gate. And we, we, we talked to the attorneys, we did, and I did a fair amount, it's just really thorny. You start tearing down people's gates, you can't do that. I mean, you can do it, but you're going to, yeah, you're going to get in a lot of trouble. And they ended up working something else, but that, in that case, there actually was a public easement that remained. So, but even in that case, we were advised, don't be tearing down gates. Let the two parties work out what they're going to work out. And they did finally work it out.
Yeah.
But during that research, I, I found examples where the judge said, yeah, you have access, but it doesn't mean you have access with a truck or you might have to walk in there. I mean, those kinds of solutions seem crazy, but I, I saw examples of it. So I don't know what will happen.
We might not like the end result, but we've got to do our best to just explore all options. And that's what we really want half the town to commit to, is, is moving this ahead and working on it.
So I, I think we have, we'll vote on it. Obviously, if it's an article, it's going to be voted on, but we'll get an estimate as to what it would realistically cost to start this challenge. Because unlike private citizens, we just can't.
No, I get it.
So, so yeah, we'll, we'll get that number and then it's going to be a matter of deciding, is it worth going in that direction or not? So.
And so, and also just asking, what options are there?
Yep.
I mean, you know, all of the attorney, I mean, what are you fighting for?
Well, that's just it, because if the verbiage, the, the way that person he was talking to, if that's actually the case, we probably already have that right now without doing anything. The town could get an agreement with him to be able to harvest the wood off that property, from my understanding of what he said to us.
Yeah, I understand the fact that he's telling you, you can't. It's, you know, that.
He believes, he believes that he owns the land and, and can dictate who travels on it. Others believe that he's wrong, but that's what he believes.
And a lawyer will help on that.
Correct.
But I can't believe there's any way that he can decide whether the town can get revenue off of their woodlot, if that's an option that the town wants to pursue or even that any town's.
Well, that's not what I'm saying. He, he was clearly said that there wouldn't be an issue for us to do that. He wouldn't, you know what I mean? He wouldn't block us from going in to do those type of things.
And I, he, he said specifically what he was opposed to was the populace having access. Because the way it has been, you didn't have to be a Sangar resident, anybody could go in there. And he said, I'm not doing that.
And, and even looking at the documentation from the federal government, from the Department of Agriculture, I believe, that gave that land to the town, is there any language in that agreement or that paperwork that says, this is part of the deal, the town can have the land, but you've got to maintain access for the citizens of the town? I don't know. You mean that?
No, that's what he's saying, that they're saying it isn't for the citizens of the town.
That's why he has to see.
Well, that, yeah, but is that, whose opinion is that? Is there a legal opinion to those words?
Ultimately, it's the judge.
You know, and someone in the Department of Agriculture or USDA, that might not be the final.
Biggest thing is the deed speaks for itself. Always got to remember that no matter what, the deed speaks for itself, no matter what. He says it, he says, he said deed speaks for itself.
Yeah.
And the question is, how did that road, when did that road, or if, if, if the road got discontinued?
Right, or abandoned.
Right.
And there's two different ways.
And what's abandoned, it means? It means just non, non-maintenance? Does it mean you lose your access? I don't know. That's all.
One, one and the other means, is, is, means you don't lose access, I believe. I'd have to look back on that.
Yep.
We have.
Yeah, we went through all of that.
You? Anything further on that?
No, if we can have access, Tom and I'll come in and figure something out.
See what we can go.
That's helpful. Appreciate it.
And we will get a number.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, we'll, we'll find an expert somewhere.
I can give that to him also. I have a guy that was recommending me to downpour it, and it's supposed to be that, this is what he does.
All right, thank you. Uh, anybody else on another topic? Yes?
Yep, Trey Mitchell. I'd like to know what the town is doing about the enforcement of the property maintenance at ten thirty-five North Dexter Road.
Is that?
Yeah.
Yep. Actually, I, I see legal bills going through. Is, is that fair to say?
Yes, yes.
Yes, there are.
I heard that December twenty-first of last year, or three months later.
I'm signing, uh, checks, outgoing checks.
Has it been filed with the county in the courthouse?
You know, you know, our wealth of information today.
It was supposed to be on here.
It was. It's my fault.
So after he came in, I, I made some calls, uh, talked to code enforcement, it's in the hands of the court.
It has been filed.
Yes, we're waiting for the court.
Going to be served. Okay. Well, the ordinance has been in effect since October of twenty-one. It's two and a half years on the ordinance. The property's worse than it's ever been. It's affecting my business across the street. Many people don't realize it's a business, because they're too mesmerized with junk that's literally on State Route twenty-three.
Yeah, he's in the breakdown lane now.
There's twelve vehicles, I can visually, twelve vehicles. None of them are registered. Most of them have attached plates. They get driven up and down the road. There's burnout marks in front of my business, not for me. People will not drop their cars off in my business now because of the garbage. The trash I have to pick up in my yard that blows over is ridiculous. This ordinance is supposed to stop that. It's been two and a half years. Where has it failed? Show me why it failed.
We all totally agree with you.
It's supposed to be fine. Is he being fined right now? Hasn't heard the ordinance?
I think the, the meter is running.
That's right.
The code enforcement officer has gone to his fullest, his, his full extent of what he can do. He has filed it with the court, and now it's just waiting for a date to.
Is he being fined right now as per the ordinance?
Gone to the court.
The court's not finding him. The town ordinance finds him.
It's gone to the.
There's some revenue right there. You need revenue for other stuff.
You gotta collect it. You have to collect it.
When he needs money, he loads up his truck with junk like he did today, and he goes down to the scrapyard.
Right, but he's not bringing that money to us.
Well, he brought it in once with some colorful language at one point, he did.
Like I said, you've got, we're all in your corner.
I'm losing money.
We would love to be rid of it.
And I intend to recoup my money if nothing is done. The domestic abuse and violence that goes on across the street and the gunshots is ridiculous. There's much more that goes on than just the property maintenance issue. I had a sheriff at my house today. Talked to him, they're quite well aware of who he is and what he does. I think it's going to take some people getting together about the maintenance issues. The lack of power, there's no power there. The property should be condemned. But you just drive by and go, oh, that's a mess, and keep right on going. It's the town of Sangerville. Do you like the town? I do. That's why I moved here. And when I saw that ordinance was in place, and there was a little bit of junk around the house, I thought, good, they're gonna do something about it. Nothing. It's gotten worse and worse and worse. The stink from that house is ridiculous. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Any, is, is there anybody else tonight? Yes, uh, yes, Diane?
Uh, Diane McCarthy-Clark.
Yeah.
I, I've got a message at three thirty that you invited me here, and I don't know if I'm on the agenda.
Yeah, uh.
Or.
Yeah, uh, if you don't mind staying, we'll, we'll get to you and your letter.
Okay.
All right?
Okay.
Appreciate your, your patience. Uh, anybody else for this two-minute period? No, okay. Uh, we totally aren't your side on this. Like, I would be just as exasperated as you are, but ju- just a limited amount of authority. We, we're doing what we can do.
It's the same thing to him yesterday.
Code enforcement.
Glad there's not next door today.
Yeah, I totally agree.
I'd be just as unhappy as you.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Honestly, if I was you, some of the things you're bringing up, it's really, it's not town-related, I would be on speed dial to the sheriff's department about some of that stuff, because.
I called Sunday night because he was beating his girlfriend out back on the property. An hour and a half later, I get a call from a sheriff who was tied up.
Yeah.
So we have no police protection in this town either.
No.
It's sad.
At times, it definitely is. I agree with you.
I have not seen a state police officer drive by in I don't know how long. Apparently, they don't patrol anymore.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I mean, when you drive down the road, you, you, once in one out of five cars, that's a thousand inspections, it's pathetic.
Yeah.
That's all I got to say. I'm done. I'm out of here. I will wait to see if she gets served.
I think he's been served.
Been served.
Yeah.
Four.
Yeah.
He made no effort.
The problem is, he doesn't have much to lose.
Yeah.
I mean, what do you get?
The generator runs all night, because he has no power, and it won't be here.
Right, that's what I'm saying. It's, it's the old blood out of a rock.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, we, we signed the minutes? Item three. Uh, review of the treasurer's warrants, payroll twenty and twenty-one.
Uh, we make motion to, uh, approve those.
Second, all in favor, and accounts payable twenty-two.
Make a motion to approve it.
Second, all in favor. Uh, old business? None?
Don't think so.
New business. Thirty-day lien notice, one oh three, oh, is that the, oh, no, it is not.
Yeah, we, we sent out a hundred and three certified mails. Um, we're starting to get some payments back from those. Uh, May first, they will go to lien. And then we also had, the planning board came in, um, Jerry Peters has resigned, and they have appointed Lee Newt as the chairman of the board.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
So those are one oh threes, those are first years?
Yeah, that's for two thousand twenty-three.
Town manager's report.
From time to time, um, staff is on vacation at the town office. That leaves one person at the town office. I'd like to have it so we could shut down, say like from eleven to noon, so that one person that's there could just shut the door, put a sign on it, down for one hour, and they can go take their break, eat their lunch, whatever it is, and, uh, you know, men don't have time to go to the bathroom, all that, because people coming in and out all the time, so, um, I'd like to do that.
That's your call, reasonable.
Yeah, totally up to you.
Same thing, go check the mail or whatever. I mean, there's things that have to happen. When you're one person, you gotta do what you gotta do.
Yeah, because if it's a, if the sign says we'll be back at one or whatever, then at least people know.
Correct.
So, yeah, that seems reasonable.
What would we like to do with the record room, that, and the records that are at the, in the basement of the town hall, because they're sitting there cold, and they're starting to get a little bit mildew? I think we need to do something with them.
Can we move them up to the first floor?
I'll have to look see how many there is there.
I mean, if, I know that you got, oh, well, not you particularly, but a lot of records were gone through in the last few months. A lot of it was, you know, novelty stuff, some of it was of value, some of it wasn't, so.
Those records actually came from upstairs with the stages.
Okay.
Ones that are in the boxes, that are in the office, those, we've sorted two big containers of those. The ones that, that Jeff is speaking about are the records that have.
In the vault?
They're downstairs in the vault, where the books are starting to get a little moldy from the temperature changes. Um, I do think if we go down, we should be able to wipe them off and bring them up to the safe that's upstairs. There are some boxes down there that are the throwaway boxes. You can keep them for seven years and throw them away.
Sure.
Those will be fine down there. There's, there's nothing that we have to keep, so to speak, forever. The other boxes, though, the books should.
So those ones you guys are talking about, those are like those old leather bound? So that's really the issue. It's not the paper, it's not, it's the leather.
It's the leather bound, and then, of course, the outside gets moldy.
No, I know, for sure.
And then it goes to inside the box. So it will mold from out to in. So if we can move those upstairs, I think that's a good idea.
I think for now, that's the first step. We've got to figure out what we're gonna do.
For those, yeah.
That. Um, Kelly Doyle, uh, she's been in, she's been in Saw Variety. She's been in Saw Patrick. She's been in Saw Both Girls. And she came in yesterday and started to go over her taxes. Uh, and then she decided she was gonna tell me what I was gonna do, and so I gave her a piece of paper, said, this is what you have to do. And gave her that. Got enough information out of her, um, before she really got upset. And we found out that we owe her eleven hundred dollars in change. Because Hamlin's had made an adjustment. They didn't notify the town. She wants to know where eleven hundred dollars went, but the town spent the eleven hundred dollars on, we didn't know anything about it, but we did some investigation. We owed about eleven hundred bucks.
So is that back from the original adjustment when she first bought the property?
Yes, two thousand.
Twenty.
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
She's been there long enough, I think. I don't know.
No? No.
Because that was the only adjustment I remember, when she bought the property, and even that, that was controversial, I'll use that word. Um, because there was a timeline from when she bought it to when she renovated, to when we went in and reassessed. So it was, that was indifferent. Um, but there was an amendment or whatever done at that time.
I haven't found anything to show us anything different than what we can see right there. And matching her story to what we figured out, there was a huge decrease in value. So like, I believe it was Lovely Properties that owned the property before Kelly bought it.
Mm-hmm.
The original taxes were like twelve hundred, thirteen hundred dollars to start with. The next year dropped to thirty dollars. So there was a huge change in taxes. Therefore, she really was kind of overtaxed.
The real estate evaluation went from a, a, a high number to almost zero.
Yes.
And, and then Hamlin didn't adjust?
He's adjusted since then. Her taxes have been about thirty dollars a year. Um, until last year, when she didn't get the full homestead, which that's going to be adjusted this year because of the revamp. But, yeah, it's.
So has Josh provided you with a written explanation as to what happened?
Really? Sounds like it to me. We, we had it right there. We need.
But this is, isn't generated by Josh.
No, that is the actual tax.
Shows that she paid.
That shows the.
Right.
The overage in taxes.
Right, so it's two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. So she owned the home in two thousand nineteen?
She bought it, I believe. I don't remember.
It was.
Seems like she's been there way longer than that.
But I think that's, that's when it was, was she bought it, and again, I'm trying to remember.
Right.
She bought it late fall, winter. She did a bunch of renovations to the building, um, demolition to the building, and then she questioned the value.
Right.
And that's when they read, because it was a, this, this isn't what it was, this is what you did, kind of a conversation. But I don't think we've ever re, I mean, she's done work on it ever since. So what should have happened is we should have adjusted in every year since, because she's worked on it. It should be going back up.
Well, and it probably will this year, because you're doing the revamp.
Well, it should have anyway, just because, I mean, she's been steadily making improvements on the property.
Right, so her taxes have been thirty dollars for how long?
I don't know. You have.
Yeah, 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 I can see it.
It was just.
It was thirty after the homestead.
Yeah, yeah.
That was part of it, I do believe, is the whole stuff.
I wouldn't know. He, I just feel like Josh, you need Josh to give you the history of what, why he assessed it the way he did. And if he made a mistake, and he's done this before, I'm not disparaging, but he says, I made a mistake on this, you, here's what I recommend you do.
That's right.
And then we sign on.
He has to give us.
That's what we did. We, we gave her the number, we gave her an abatement sheet, and told her to contact Hamlin and bring that information back, and we go from there.
Okay, so we just need the letter from Josh.
Yeah, we need Josh.
Instructing us.
To instruct the board, here's what I think you need to do.
Yeah.
Because we've had the same conversation every year, and every year, the town has been correct.
Yep.
She was not correct.
But Josh has made corrections.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, we.
I thought this building belonged to this person, and it was to this person, so we need to.
Yeah, that building came down two years ago. I didn't realize.
But he directs us normally.
He does.
We just want to make sure we make it, make it right with her, whatever it is.
Absolutely.
Right, absolutely.
Totally agree.
At the next meeting, we should have a resolution on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's it for me.
Okay. Are you ready?
I'm here.
Uh, Diane McCarthy-Clark is here.
Oh, no.
That's right.
Oh, well, I'm.
Yeah, you can have mine.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so Diane has submitted a letter for consideration in the town report. Uh, it's, uh, it's kind of a position paper from the ad hoc town hall committee.
Yes, we were, um, contacted and invited to give a report.
Okay, um, do, does anybody want to start with this, or?
Well, go ahead, Mike.
There, one of, there's a couple of things here. One that really kind of caught my eye is, uh, midway through here, you say, we figured that if the board thought the number was affordable, we should use the same number. And you're referencing your request for four hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of town funds to do this renovation of, of the old town hall. Um, that just strikes me as kind of very glib. I mean, our, our four hundred and forty thousand was based on an engineering proposal, an analysis for a particular job, a job that if finished, was probably gonna set the town up for the next hundred years. It was a specific job. It has no correlation to this job, and yet it's the entire underpinning that you use for your request. It just seems very disjointed.
It was a number that the committee felt was going to be a fair target, considering that at the special town meeting in December, that same number had been approached, um, with the board's article for, um, building a new town office using surplus funds. And we just thought as a group that that number, if, if the board thought four hundred and forty thousand was available from surplus funds for a new town office, then maybe we should start with that same figure. It's not meant to be glib. It's just an explanation that this is how we came up with that number. You came up with that four hundred and forty thousand based on whatever it was that you based it on, and we just thought that we would go with that same number, um, as we move forward with our findings.
But it's like saying, um, we're gonna ask for a hundred and eighty thousand, because that's what the town pays for snowplowing. They don't have anything to do with each other.
It's two completely different things.
They don't have anything to do with each other.
Right.
Well, okay, but I can't, I can't. I'm just here because you invited me. That number was something that, as a committee of, at that point, more than eighteen people, made an agreement that it was a reasonable number to target. And it was based on the figure from the special town meeting article. That's all there is, that, you know, how did we come up with that number? Because the select board came up with that number. Whether you got it through engineering reports or a, a dart at a target, it didn't make any difference to us. We didn't know. It's just, here's the.
Well, you did know, actually, because you were part of that project with us.
Yeah, but you, you were a part of that.
Here's the board's number, and we're just gonna use that number as a realistic number when we ask for surplus funds for our article. That's all it is.
When I read that, when I read that, honestly, I read that as, the first thing is, I was really disappointed, because the number one view from that special meeting, and from a lot of people that were on that committee, was, and the reason why they voted down our new town office is because they want a real number. They, as far as to repair that building. What's it gonna cost?
They wanted details.
Yeah, but they want a real number.
And that's.
That number is far from a real number.
Um, based on the, the estimates that we've gotten so far, it, it is within, I would say, the realm of a real number. Based on the things that we've been able to get from reputable contractors and reputable companies, that is looking like it is a valid number to work toward.
And based on engineering? And, and you've got an engineer who's working.
We have not done, we have gone with companies based on, we've gone with companies based on the, uh, recommended. the recommendations of MMA, the insurance report that they gave the town that showed the violations that they said we can't, in good faith, insure the town hall because of these concerns. We took those concerns as the basis for finding out what would it cost for concern one, what would it cost for concern two, what would it cost for concern three? We went very simply on, this is what MMA says that they can't insure the building for, let's see what it would cost to correct those issues so that insurance could be found again. Now, it's just, I find this a frustrating piece that we're talking about this because, and I understand you're going to find it frustrating too because you feel as though you've done all your homework and you've checked all the boxes, and you have made a decision that the town hall is not a viable option for the town office and continued money to be put into it. The committee wants the town to have an opportunity to make a decision on their own. And what we did is we based it on the figures that we have been able to get that were a result of going down the MMA list. It's frustrating. I understand that we are in complete opposite viewpoints about what should be done with the town hall. I understand that. I understand that you're frustrated because you feel you've done due diligence to come up with a decision about what the town hall and its future should be. We take another view, and we feel as though we're doing due diligence.
And your letter maps out all the steps.
Yes.
So let me ask you, if if it turned out that the proposal that you have here could be demonstrated to be impossible or false.
What do you mean by false?
Well, in other words, our intention is to do these repairs in this way, and then the town office operations will be brought back in because we'll have insurance, and then the next step and the next step. If you knew that you couldn't do this, would you still pursue this? Would you still try to get this passed?
Is this where you are going to insert that you have had some engineers come into the building and take a look at?
No, no, actually. I want to say.
You already know.
I want to say one thing, though, right off the bat. There is no frustration for me because you have a different opinion. Whether or not you guys' opinion is to fix the building, and my opinion is to build a new one, I'm not frustrated by that. What I'm frustrated with is, like they said, I want, if you're going to do this, I want to see a real number that the citizens can make a decision. That's the frustrating part when I read this.
The real numbers are at the second half of the page. Those are the numbers that have been found so far. Dennis Campbell has done yeoman's work to contact people who can give us solid figures. And we were able, Dennis was able to get into the building with Patrick and the contractor or the company and come up with real solid estimates, bankable estimates, on what each of the jobs would entail. Now, we do have missing figures, and that's because after Patrick left, we were no longer able to have access to the building to bring in other people in order to get the rest of the figures that were necessary. But I think what I am frustrated by is that it's such a struggle for citizens to try and get something on the town warrant so that a vote can be had. The whole purpose of this is just to allow the people of the town to have a vote.
But back to my previous question, actually, you've got your signature, so you're going to be on the warrant. But it's also really important that whatever ends up on the warrant is a reflection of reality. It's true, and I'm not talking about an opinion. I'm saying, this is why my previous question. If you knew hypothetically that if you did all these things, that you still were not going to get insurance, would you promote this? If you knew for sure that this remedy that you've mapped out wasn't going to get the insurance back, would you still support it?
I can't talk for, I am not the committee. Jeff.
I'd like to speak for that.
Well, let me finish first, because Jeff reached out to MMA.
Jeff Libby.
Yes. This is the person in charge of risk management, the person who's in charge of this report. He got this back. He said, "For MMA to consider placing coverage back on this building, we will need a copy of a licensed engineer's report and a sign off from him or her that all engineering recommendations have been satisfactorily completed." This is the same information given to Lance Johnson on three fifteen. So Lance knows this. That means you guys know this. You know that unless all of the things in this report, and he doesn't say, "You can just do the basement," or "You can just do the third floor," he says everything. Lance knows this, which means you know this. You're not going to get the insurance back if you do everything on your list. MMA has just told you this. So my question is, are you still going to promote this when you know that the assertion that you're making isn't going to happen?
Didn't you want to speak?
Yeah, I might too.
Are you?
So, let's regroup for just a second. You said that our numbers are not researched.
I don't know if we actually said they weren't researched.
You said we're not bringing a realistic number to the table.
Well, I said referencing our four forty was not.
That's.
That was improper.
That's what we said.
Has nothing to do with your project.
Right.
If we had three hundred thousand.
What has a lot to do with that project is this. Two select meetings ago, we asked for access to try to finish that oak so it would be ready for our town meeting to put in front of the people. And you yourself denied that access. And you're chastising us for not having a real number. You are in the driver's seat. You have the ability to grant or deny access, which you denied. So.
At the recommendation of our attorney, or your attorney, actually.
But you already had the four forty far before you had any numbers.
In fact, you haven't even spent the four forty.
No.
Because the four forty is a number based on something that has nothing to do with what you're doing. This could be for a salt shed. It has nothing to do with your project.
In your presentation on the new town office bill, the question was asked more than once. Where is the money going to come from? And your response in that meeting to the town council's people was, "We have that money in reserve. We do not need to raise taxes. We do not need to borrow money. That money is in reserve." And in our opinion, it's in reserve because we've neglected our buildings. That money was put into maintenance all along. We wouldn't be here to start with.
Well, the building next door isn't one of them that was neglected, because we spent hundreds of thousands on that one.
We haven't spent anything on it since twenty nineteen.
Well, we've spent over half a million dollars in the last twenty years, and you have a zero.
It still needs to be redone.
It didn't work. We had this conversation a couple of weeks ago.
Oh, we had this conversation redone?
The other thing is, with regard to the special meeting, that number, and perhaps it was not, perhaps everyone didn't, no one understood, was, we, all we were asking for at that meeting was to have permission to go after congressional spending.
So why did you not write that on the warrant when you put it in front of the townspeople to vote on, if that's what you were looking for?
Diane knows the answer. She knows that if we just ask for money, you're not going to get it. You have to commit to the project, just like other towns did. If you just say, "Hey, please, can we have a bucket of money?" They're not going to give it to you, or you're not very likely to get it. And so it was worded in that way. But I want, we're.
Yeah, we're getting on.
Lance told you that you needed to do this in order to get the insurance back, and you guys are making the assertion that you're going to get the insurance back, and you know you're not. So my question is, should you be doing that?
Lance's interpretation was that the repairs that it was called out for by our insurance company, which we were told originally that we lost our insurance, and that's not the case. We never lost insurance on that building. What happened was, three town meetings ago, our select board asked for some discretionary spending money in the amount of ten thousand dollars, and then after the meeting, rented the space and moved us out of our own building.
That's not true.
You're just making stuff up.
Reading meetings?
Sir, yes, you are.
No, I'm not.
Yes, you are.
That's totally inaccurate.
So you think we could still be in there? Is that the world you live in right now?
No, if we were still in there.
No, I mean with insurance.
No, if we had not moved out of that building, we could approach this as maintenance and maintain our insurance through.
Oh, so they wouldn't have, the whole liability insurance being pulled, we made that up. That never happened.
They didn't pull it.
They, we have a liability because we agreed to leave. If we didn't leave, they were going to discontinue our liability insurance. That's, it's no wonder that you're so frustrated. You actually think we orchestrated the move.
We kicked the can down because of COVID, because we would have had to move sooner. And we were saying, well, at least with COVID, we're kicking the can down the road because they were giving us the leeway to stay there. So.
So one of the words that you guys use often is transparency. And I'm here to tell you, as a citizen, trying to accomplish something as a citizen, transparency is not a thing with you guys at all. It is an issue.
Could you give us an example of where we were lacking transparency?
So in our meetings, in our town hall meetings, before it turned into the town hall committee, in our town hall, what to do with the town office, back in the fall, I asked the insurance question twice. The second time I asked the question, Jody gave me an answer that the insurance was not indeed canceled.
What?
I had asked that question multiple times.
It wasn't canceled. It's, you're confusing.
We talked about this repeatedly. It's been in, I don't know how many different meetings.
We avoided it being canceled by being compliant. They told us if that building was open for day-to-day business, then we were going to lose our insurance.
All insurance.
All of it. So we complied, and it wasn't canceled. But that doesn't mean we could have stayed there.
This is what I'm trying to say. You complied. You made a decision for the town.
We didn't have a choice.
Did you or did you not?
We did not have a choice.
How can a town have people in a building with absolutely no insurance in it? No liability.
Well, I get it. I mean, you guys think we should let you in the building.
Contractor repairs that they called us out on. That's what we needed to do.
What?
Or we needed to make a decision as a town whether to do that or do what you guys decided to do.
We had no choice.
No choice.
We had no choice. We can't operate a town with no liability.
And we have to conduct day-to-day business. Therefore, we have to move out. Because.
This goes back to transparency.
We told you this.
Everybody thinks the same thing. No, you didn't ever tell me this. What you told me that.
It's actually in the town report, Jeff.
You told us that the liability insurance was canceled. When I did my homework, it was not.
No, we didn't say liability.
Decision was made to move out of the old town office by you and not by the citizens of this town. That is a fact.
Yeah. May I interrupt? May I interrupt? This is not getting us anywhere because.
Actually, it's pretty productive.
It isn't because there are two different perspectives.
It's not two perspectives.
It's not. No, it's not.
Inaccurate information.
This is true?
Accurate information.
Correct.
But it's not going to get anywhere.
It will, actually, Diane.
Back and forth and back and forth. It's not.
I think it's great getting this on the record. I think it's very helpful.
What I would like to go back to is your concern that MMA has said that we would need to have an engineer's clearance on anything that was taken care of.
The report that you guys are using?
Every single item.
I guess.
Before and after, it says, you have to have an engineer.
We recommend.
If I could add.
A professional engineer.
May I continue with my?
It says it a dozen times.
May I continue? What I want to know is, what do you think the cost of, because you have more experience than I do, what would the cost of an engineer coming in after repairs were done in order to be able to, say?
No, no, no.
Well, you got it backwards.
You got it backwards.
You have to have the engineers in first to map out exactly what the process of all of the repairs that are going to be done in that building. And because it's a multi-story building, you may have to start with sagging balconies before you can even do anything else. You know, you have to have a comprehensive engineering study of the building.
I don't understand why we, unless regulations have changed, I don't understand why that has to be the first step, but now I'm backtracking myself and I'm going to. I'm not going to, I made a mistake here. But here's what I want to know. How much would it cost for an engineer to do the work you say needs to be done?
You mean a comprehensive plan?
Yeah.
Seventy-five grand?
It'll be up there.
Okay, because the way it's working now, according to the budget as we see it, and that budget does include a couple of things that were not on the MMA agenda, like paving the parking lot or painting or whatever, all of that kind of stuff. We still had a hundred and thirty thousand dollars that hadn't been earmarked for the renovations that MMA report had asked for.
But an engineering's plan may not allow for some of the contractors you guys have chosen. In order for him to sign off on, he may have specific. Things may need to be done at a certain level, and it needs to be a certain contractor. You may not just be able to pick and choose who's going to do this. Because it's his name at the end of it that's got a sign off on this that says that's fixed and fixed properly.
Well, we have.
I was going to say, I bet, honestly, I was hoping you was going to.
I can answer that for you. You need to have engineers in the beginning, because they do the layout, they do the design, and they're also going to be the ones inspecting the work. As far as you just said there, you can't pick anybody. You pick and choose. You have to pick people by their content to do the job.
We did buy.
No, I'm just answering that. I don't know. I don't know what you've done. I've kind of heard some things. But you do need an engineer in the beginning and at the end. They're the ones going to be driving the school bus, if you can get it to that point. But you can't get it to that point unless you have access to the building to complete an actual physical number.
And what happened to us is, we started with the foundation, and we got an engineering report for that, and the latest updated number. Now, it only addresses one item in this packet, okay? It's just the foundation and some damage to the first floor. That was at six hundred thousand. That was his estimate. We haven't addressed anything else that's in this packet. So when we got to six hundred thousand, we started looking at other alternatives, like a congressionally funded building that would only cost us sixty grand. Those were the kinds of things that we started looking at. But we didn't even do a full analysis. We just did the foundation and the damage of the first floor, and that's what the engineering firm came up with. Now, if we followed their advice and we did the job the way they said it should be done, they would come back and they would sign off and say, "This has been done up to our engineering standards," and probably MMA would be happy with that part of it. But it doesn't address all the other things in this packet. Those also, we never got numbers for the balconies, for all the other things. So we just stopped at six hundred grand. But we could do that.
That was pretty transparent. I'm sorry.
It's right in the town report, Jeff.
It's in the town report.
It's literally in the town report.
I don't know why you continually say you're not transparent, because all of this is.
You need to be informed.
You said you were computer literate, but these are not on the computer. These are right in the.
Also, just so Diane and for whomever else, with regard to an engineering report, I just want to point out that the work that was done, what, twenty years ago or whatever?
Yes.
There was a full plan. And because it. And because it.
Was not followed.
It was not followed.
It was very similar to this process. People said, ah, you don't need to do.
You don't need that. They, they asked for the.
We'll talk about, no, but it was, it, just to be clear, it wasn't some people. It was the town manager at that time and the board at that time. That's.
And there was a committee.
But the committee made suggestions, the committee did the work of finding contractors, et cetera, et cetera. But it wasn't the committee who made the final recommendations. There was a lot of money that we had procured through, um, town meetings that was, um, let's say reallocated by either the select board at that time or the town manager at that time. It had nothing to do with our committee, a citizens committee disregarding the engineering report.
But the danger of not following an engineer's report and a comprehensive plan for the building is, for example, the work, all the work that was done on that building, that's how you lost access to the second story. Because by doing all that ADA work, big wide doors, able to come in, big bathroom, turn around in a wheelchair. Because you brought that up to ADA on the first story, you lost your use of the second story because you lost.
Once you've spent enough money, you have to be compliant throughout.
Throughout the entire building.
Well, but, the plan had been, and this was over a long period of time, was to have a reserve account that every year the town contributed to so that we could get an elevator. And the original plan, if you, if you remember in the community room, there's a little nook. And that was, along with some of the space in the hall, was going to be for an elevator that went up onto the right-hand side of the stage. That money was a sizable chunk of money, ended up being reallocated for a sprinkler system. And it knocked the feet right out from getting ADA compliance for the second floor for the next phase of the, of the renovation. Like I'm saying.
Actually though, that was lucky.
Yeah.
I mean, because if we had renovated the second floor to another tune of a few hundred thousand and the, because the foundation was gonna fail anyway, I mean, nobody knew that, but because we didn't follow the engineering plan, it, so we would have even a greater loss than we have today.
Well, okay.
You see the point?
I do see your point and I understand your concern about, um, the engineering report.
It's, it's actually MMA's concern. We're just.
Right.
I do, I do understand that. I do. But, based on a very, very dedicated group of citizens trying their very best to come up with a solution, which includes facts that are backed by people who know what they're doing. They're not just, you know, we're not just getting some guy who's, you know, I've done my own basement before. We're talking about some very reputable companies who have come in and made some, some good estimates, I, I would say. Um, Dennis does his work. He's not, he's not gonna bring in people who are just so-and-so's. He's got some good people who've done the work. The whole purpose of this is to get it so that the townspeople have some say in what happens to the building. And I understand your point. All I'm saying is, as, as a citizens committee, we've done our darndest to do the best that we possibly can. And it's, it's just, we have done what we can do. And if you're, if you're second guessing it, fine, that will come up.
It's just facts. It's not a second guess.
And the whole idea is, that's the kind of stuff that you can bring up at the town meeting when that article comes up. You can express your opinion about the need for, not, not an opinion, but you, you can express the need for, um, a viable engineer's report to guide what's going on. We have information that we can share too. But the point is, this shouldn't, I, I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't understand why I am defending something that an entire committee put together. I'm one person.
This is your letter, that's all. That's how it gets started.
Yeah, it's your letter.
I'm one, I am one person. That I didn't write that whole thing by myself. Granted, you know my writing style.
Yeah, there's not a lot in it that wasn't you.
Yeah. And, and I did get input from others, as I always do. I get input from others. There, we, we did the best we could to try and make it as, as factual as possible without pointing fingers at anybody. It's just, this is what we did, this is how we did it, this is why we're doing it. And the whole purpose of it is to just get it so that people can vote on whether or not they want to put a ton of effort into.
If you're telling people they vote for this, what's going to happen is X, Y, Z. But we know it's not because MMA is saying it won't. That's where, that's not a matter of opinion. MMA is not going to give the insurance back. So it begs the question. Because you know that that's, so what do you really want? They're not, you're not getting back into that building with liability insurance if you follow this plan. So what's really the end game?
And how would we know that, Mike?
Because MMA has specifically addressed it.
You as select.
No, Lance Johnson.
Lance Johnson got this problem. I think he collected signatures for you guys. Now, he was, he was out of his lane when we did this.
Let's rewind a second. What I wanted to make for a point. Did I ask something?
No, let Jeff finish.
No, it's quick ones. A little question.
Alright.
Did I see that?
Yes. This, this was in response to a question that Jeff asked.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I get it.
I'll tell you how I got it. Do you want to know how I got that? Literally? How I got that was, I called MMA on the clarifications of the insurance and everything on the building. And I've got a response. Called again, and I've got a response. Finally, I got somebody else at MMA that passed me on to this gentleman. And he says, we gave that information to Lance Johnson two weeks ago. He did, he said, we thought you had your answer. And so, that, that's what he said. I said, can you send me something? And that's what he sent me on.
Because clearly, you, the committee thinks if you bring that up to their deficiencies, take care of it, the insurance will be restored and you go on the line.
But you gotta realize Lance Johnson is one of them. Lance is part of their committee.
Right.
So they already know this. That's the point.
You're saying if all of that's corrected, they can insure that building?
Correct. And Lance knows it.
And Jeff, you know it, because you was actually in the building with me, the old town manager, when the engineers was there. And we had this conversation, as long as it's a municipal-owned building, and you start messing with that floor and things start changing, it is no longer just the floor, because now you're into the walls. You're starting into the walls, now you gotta finish the wall. He actually told us that once you start this project, it's gonna keep extrapolating to more and more to bring the code.
And that's why he talked about a nonprofit. We all agreed in, in November, that the two-building solution was the only thing that made sense. Because a nonprofit isn't held to the same standards as a tier-one municipal building. You knew that. The engineers explained it to us. And we all agreed on it. And now, you guys are promoting a false reality. That's, that's not a difference of opinion. So, like, again, if you get this money, is it basically spend as much of it as you can and then make the nonprofit so you get the building for free and the free money? Is that?
No.
So.
No, no, absolutely not.
Because there's no other explanation for this. You know that we are not getting back in there if we piecemeal this. And your proposal is a piecemeal. So, another, just a tidbit, has really nothing to do with this project, but you might find it interesting. Historical. Um, so.
Actually, they will consider insuring it as long as the engineer signs off.
Well, yeah. Yeah, no, crystal clear. You need an engineer to get in and an engineer to get out.
That's what it says.
Exactly. No, totally agree with you.
But he's only gonna sign off till everything is done.
But you gotta start.
No, you've gotta stop the engineer.
And the engineer.
And they're gonna do, they're gonna do the description. And the contractor's gonna take care of it.
Yep.
Hundred percent agree with you.
But you can get insured.
That's the whole goal. You gotta, but you gotta play by the rules.
You gotta have an engineer.
That's right.
That's what that says. It's only, it's only two sentences.
But you gotta complete whatever deficiencies.
Follow all of those highlighted deficiencies and fix them all according to an engineering plan.
And it's frustrating because we have been talking about this all along and said, as long, yeah, yeah. You, you're getting an engine, you know, we, that's what, we thought the direction you were going in. And, um, clearly, that's not what you did. Um.
And the scary thing is, even though this is, like I said, it's an alternate reality, if you have enough hands raised, you're gonna get to do it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Just like 20 years ago, a bunch of people got together and said, eh, we don't need to do it the way they said. They just wasted a million dollars.
And did it.
No, it wasn't a bunch of people, again.
Well, I was just, I, I.
Just.
Individuals.
But regardless, it's the same scenario.
It is.
If you don't follow the engineer report, that's why that's in there that you have to. Because they're actually trying to protect the town to make sure that you can't spend this money in bad directions, because your end game, he has to sign off on.
And the other thing about professional engineers is they're putting their stamp on something that they basically are saying that this building is gonna last the next 100 years. Their name is online when they put that stamp on there. There, and so, that's our guarantee. That's our responsibility to this town to not.
To give you an example, Jeff had an engineering firm that he works with in Guilford, that he brought to that building. And they said, this project is way too big for us. They're smart enough to know that there are limitations.
Well, they're experienced enough to know.
They, they're experts.
Exactly. They're professional engineers.
So, somebody went in after we were told that no one was going in the building.
The town manager.
Can go in.
Reached out to an engineering firm and said, would you be interested in assessing this building? And they said, this project's too big for us. Think about that.
Well, that just means they're not qualified. That's a bad thing.
But they're, they're educated enough to know it.
No, that engineering firm is not qualified to do that. That's what that says.
Right. But All Things Basement Day doesn't look at it that way.
Yeah, well.
Right?
That's different.
That's who we, that's who we got our quote from.
I'm just making a comment on what you just said. That engineering firm is not qualified. That's what they did.
No, it doesn't, no, it doesn't necessarily mean that. It's too big of a project. No, he said, we don't wanna.
He said, he said it's too big a project.
He said it's too beyond their scope.
Nope, what they wanna deal with.
So you find somebody that does what?
That's right. That's right.
But it's.
Too much time.
Right, it's time.
Too much time.
It's too big of a project. They don't wanna.
Too much time.
Right.
That's what I mean. It's beyond their scope. They can't handle it.
Right, so maybe it's beyond the scope of a committee of people that have nothing to do with engineering.
Well.
That's the point.
That's another argument.
Well, no, that's the point.
Okay, so, can I ask another thing? Do you have some plans and design for a new building?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did.
You do?
Yep.
Where'd they come from?
Where? Plymouth Engineering.
Who paid for them?
We did. We did. Town did.
So where are the committee?
It was, in fact, it was on the budget.
Tasked with what to do with the old building. We have zero budget whatsoever. We're not allowed to lean on town property.
We offered all that to you, you didn't want it. We offered it to you, you didn't want it.
Didn't want what?
We, Diane was gonna be on the committee.
No.
Phase, phase two of this.
You elected our committee, the six members.
It's our committee.
That's how a town committee works.
You don't understand town government.
Municipal government, it doesn't, that, that's, it's our committee. It's, it's, the committee serves us.
That's under statute.
To, to inform us as far as moving forward. So, we formed a committee to continue this work with regard to now going towards a 501(c)(3), which is what the plan was with package.
And you agreed to it, Jeff.
Yep.
Yes, you did. Eleven-six. Eleven-six.
Listen to it.
Listen to the meeting.
So, here's my point. Through this process, that we've been, everybody in the town wants to say at the town hall.
False statement.
The majority of the people do.
False statement, but that's okay. We just, at this meeting, one thing I wanna be clear right now. We just saw earlier in this meeting, how many people just got served lien notices?
Hundred and three.
I'm pretty sure 103 people that can't afford their taxes, that are gonna get a lien, aren't in favor of a chance of a tax increase for that building. Say anything about the rest of the citizens in the town. But that's a pretty easy 103 right there.
You told us you had like 300 people sign, or some, it was a big number.
We talked to all the 300 people and it was 252 signatures certified for the.
Okay, so, easy peasy. Each one of your signatures, they give you two grand. It's a half a million bucks. You guys, do your nonprofit, you got your half a million, have at it. Do whatever you want. Do, use All Things Basement Day, do whatever you wanna do. I, I, I think we would put that on the warrant in 10 seconds. You, just two grand apiece.
What I'm saying to you is.
Is that all about any?
We weren't allowed as a committee to converse with you as our leaders and come up with a direction in this.
We did, Jeff, on 11-6, listen to the audio. You were in favor of a two-building solution. We promoted the first.
It was gonna be developed until January 8th.
And, and that was also agreed upon. After the special town meeting, phase two would take place. And it was, Diane, you remember this, right?
What?
We were gonna pursue the nonprofit, do a utilization study, that was all agreed to in November.
That's right.
And every, in fact, we were all on the same page.
We were all on the same page.
And we weren't bad guys. We weren't opaque. Everybody was in agreement.
But people can change their minds.
Okay, but you can't.
But you, you, and yeah.
I mean, we have not, we.
We haven't changed.
We have not changed. We have stayed the course as far as.
And reality hasn't changed.
Our responsibilities with regard to this town and, and.
I understand that. I do understand that. I just, I don't. Are you, did you ask me to come here with the idea that you would convince me that we need to pull that article from the warrant?
I don't think you can. Can they?
I don't know if you can.
I don't think so.
I don't think you can pull an article.
I haven't gotten any answers back.
Okay. I, I was, I was curious, because we haven't been faced with this before. And I, I asked Michelle, I said, do you think an article can be pulled? And we were spitballing it. I, I don't think it can be.
Okay. I'll go to the site tomorrow.
I think once, I think the only time that could be pulled would be before you submitted it to the town.
Correct.
That's my opinion. I think once it's been validated, I'm not so sure you can.
Okay. Then, I guess.
Because.
I guess what needs to happen is that we need to go forward with the town meeting.
Oh, we're definitely.
When the article, yes, whenever that is. Um, when the article comes up, you express these concerns. Make it clear what you believe.
It's not gonna make any difference. If you have 85 people there that are gonna raise their hand no matter what, it's gonna go through.
And you can't have people standing up, making false statements.
I think if people.
Unfortunately, you can.
Right, but I mean.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There you go.
It's not gonna, it's not fair.
Okay, but I think if people keep their cool, stick with the facts, don't yell at each other, don't cast dispersions on someone's character, and just say, this is, this is the fact.
I knew it's such, you've said this before.
We've done this, we've done our, as much as we can as a citizens group, our due diligence in trying to come up with a solution to keep the town hall for the town office. If we've made a mistake, you can bring that up. If it's done in a manner where people can listen and digest the information. I don't, I, to tell you the truth, I don't think that this is sealed and delivered as this is what's going to happen. Because as much as we speak to our choir, there are gonna be people in that, in that town meeting who are not in our choir. There are differences of opinions. This is a passionate issue. But I think if people listen with an open mind to all the things that are being said, including what you said about an engineer needs to be a part of this process from the start, then people can make a decision that is informed. And if they say no to it, then that's what happens and we start another route. If they say yes to it, then we're gonna have to take a look at, you know, the cost of an engineer survey. We have $130,000 that we haven't.
What you're gonna find out is when we do the engineering survey, the cost of. the cost of the total building is, I predict, is gonna be an astronomical number.
Well, if it is, then.
But that, I feel, should be done prior to the meeting so that people are informed with regard to that as well. That, that engineering report, if, if you're gonna present this and say, well, we can do it this way, I think we also need to go ahead and get an engineering, which we can.
We can. Well, do we have time?
But we don't have the money.
We do. But you know what? We have contingency. I think this is serious enough so that you, you, you burn your contingency if you have to. Because, I mean, it'd be one thing if you guys are sitting here saying, oh, wow, it was, it was not intended, but clearly we started something here that is not in the best interest of the town. We're gonna stand up and rename. Okay, but that's not what's gonna happen, I don't, I fear. We, we need to have.
Right, because.
Whatever it's gonna take. We, we need a full report on.
Right, so that we can come with an informed bit on our part.
And honestly, even if we spend the, whatever it takes, if everybody still raises their hand, it's not gonna make any difference. You're gonna get the money, you're gonna get to do this if you want to. So, remember, we're not trying to get access to someone else's money. Okay? That's not what we're doing. We're trying to protect people's money.
And that's your role.
That's right.
Yep. So.
I get that.
We're not getting anything out of this, other than grief.
Lots of grief.
Lots of grief. So, so yeah, I, I think if, if we can, real, I don't want to push town meeting into May if we can help it.
It's two weeks.
I, what, we will make a, we'll take a motion and action, but I don't know what else to do.
I don't know how we can spend the funds.
I think it's an emergency, but we can debate that.
I think I would want to have the town lawyer, we have to do a motion, talk about it, I guess.
This is the, this, these are the things we wrestle with.
Understand that when these engineers, they don't just look around. They, we have to open walls. We have to tear things down for them to look at. We have to do that.
Yeah, and, and this is gonna happen anyway.
We have to tear things down if they wanna see something in the walls. And, and so it's, it's a big deal. It's a big deal. And we, as a commit, as, as Lockman, decided we didn't wanna put that.
Once we got to six hundred thousand, we just backed away.
We said, that's, we're not gonna spend the town's money that way. But anyway, if we're gonna do that, then it's, I mean, walls get opened and, and once you sign up with the firm, there, we have to do exactly what they say they have to do to make their informed.
And so let, let's just, let's say we do that, and they come back with a number to do the whole building, to get it all tier one approved so that we can, what ultimately is it gonna cost? Let's say that it's eight million dollars. At that point, what would your position be? What do you think? I mean, would your committee at that point say, gee, boy, eight million is, let's do it, or that's a little rich for Sangerville? Where do you think you guys would lay in?
I have no idea. I, I can't, I don't know.
I can answer that question.
Well, if I can't and I'm on the committee, I.
Well, I can answer the question of what's gonna happen at a town meeting. I'm very confident. Three quarters of the people are gonna say, that guy doesn't know what he's talking about.
Right. We don't need an engineer.
Because we've already done this.
Right.
This, we're three in, I mean.
There's the Sangerville.
Nobody wants to believe facts. That's the problem.
We're not gonna give a real number anyways unless you put it out for bid. That's all I'm saying.
Right. Oh, absolutely. That's what we're talking about.
An engineer's estimate is just exactly.
You, absolutely.
Hundred percent.
The entire comprehensive.
That would be the second step.
That's right. The entire.
That's all you're gonna do.
That's right.
They're gonna run through, they, they won't give you a total of that.
No.
They'll, they'll be halfway there roughly.
No, but we're gonna have them.
Now you're gonna put it out for bid.
That's right.
But they'll have a window.
That's the only way you're gonna get a real number.
Absolutely.
They'll say it's probably somewhere between six and eight million, whatever they come, but it's gonna fall probably within that window.
What do you think the new town office will cost?
We already know.
We.
We got the.
You already got the prices?
Yep. I mean, we didn't, we didn't put out to bid, but we got a, a range again.
You need to put it out for big, you know, the price. This is what I do for living.
No, I know. I, I'm familiar with it.
How many square feet is it?
Was it eleven, twelve hundred, eleven, twelve hundred?
Yeah, very, very modest building.
It doesn't have a vault?
Does not have a vault?
No, I don't.
No.
No, no. We don't need a vault.
Well, I mean, a, a, did we build a concrete vault in there as far as, did we have vault?
I don't remember. I haven't seen the plans. But it was, Plymouth Engineering did it as a tier one municipal building.
Yeah.
With a community room and they gave us an estimate. It doesn't have a vault?
Doesn't have a vault.
Yeah, it's got a vault. It's got a vault. It did.
We have plans.
We, we did Plymouth last year. We finished it in June. Our scope was no hot tub, no septic, no water. And our groundwork was five feet from the foundation. That's it. And we was a little over seven hundred.
Yep, yep.
That's no engineering cost, no asphalt, and the rest of the groundwork, no septic, no well.
Yeah, well, they, they, they were at four fifty. That, that was the estimate.
That's way low.
Well, thank you.
That's what I'm saying. The only way you're gonna get a real number.
Right, no.
Sure.
Is put it out for bid.
But you're, you're making me feel better when we've had an engineer looking at that and tell us we're in a few millions to fix it. If you're taking our, our number is three quarter.
They're just throwing them money out there, or a number. That's all they're doing is.
The town of Dexter just did a building the same size as the airport. And it's one point five million dollars.
Okay, so how much to rebuild the castle next door?
We don't know. We don't even have access to get quotes on it.
You need their access. You don't understand.
Number one thing, all you really needed, the number one thing to start was the engineer report. That's where you start.
I understand that.
Is the town, is the new town built on the warrant?
Probably will put it on again.
Okay.
Probably will.
But if you have four hundred or so, you're about half. Depends on where it goes and what you do.
I, and it, now we, with the hindsight, the benefit of hindsight, we know we would have gotten the congressional funds. So it was gonna cost us sixty or seventy grand, but. Next year's bucket is, is less full.
Right.
And there's also some political risk. So, but.
Oh, yeah. As, oh, the bucket coming from.
Correct. You might have a different person signing off at the top, so.
Oh, it may be gone. It, I, I, I fear it's.
Yeah, that's good news.
At risk. Yeah.
For sure.
That we're, we, we missed the window.
But to give you an idea, if, if Dexter does a project, or Dover does a project, or Bangor does a project, it's, it's very different than Sangerville doing a project. Just an easy number to remember. A seven and a half million dollar project in, in Sangerville is a hundred mil. Okay? That's what you would take from the taxpayers to drive that. In Bangor, that might be two million. Okay? So what does a hundred mil mean to Diane? Take your tax bill, multiply it times five, and then add it to the existing tax bill. That's the ramifications of a project that's only seven and a half million dollars in Sangerville. That's how little horsepower we have. The same thing in Herman, you barely notice it. Okay? So that's, a lot of people don't know those numbers, they don't understand it, but that's the reality. So even a six hundred thousand dollar foundation, it's, that's a thirty-five percent increase in your taxes. I mean, if we got the money, we don't, but we gotta replace it, so that's what it amounts to in Sangerville. So we don't take, we don't take it lightly when it comes time to do a project of that magnitude.
I get it.
I, I, do you want us still to consider this with maybe disclosures? I mean, we could write adjacent to it our concerns. I mean, I, I really have a hard time putting this in the town report based on what we've all just discussed. We know that it's not even possible.
Again, I can't make a decision for
Correct.
a committee on the writer. That's who I am for the committee. I am the writer for it.
How much time do you guys spend on that, you think?
We have been meeting weekly since January eighth. And that's just the meeting time. We've also had subcommittees that have done a lot of that work. Learning about warrants, learning about citizens petitions, getting feedback from different places. Dennis has put in, I mean, it's been a full-time job for him with what he's done. We are talking about hundreds of volunteer hours, hundreds. I've been keeping track of it. Do you have a subcommittee, you said you had subcommittees, that's working on a 501(c)(3)?
At this point, it's on hold.
Why?
Be, okay, because, because.
It's phase two.
It's, it's all about, let's see what this happens, and if this doesn't.
But it seems, seems, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And if this doesn't work, then Plan B, let's see what a citizens, 501(c)(3) nonprofit could do with the building.
So from listening to you guys' tapes, your recordings, that's not really what the conversation was. I, I know a lot of people mentioned that the intent is to start here, and then phase two is for you guys to have a nonprofit and to go back to the town to have the building donated to.
There's been discussions since then that has.
Well, it's consistent with what you wrote though.
Yeah, it's just, it's just, we're just looking at options to make the building something that stays in Sangerville and doesn't go to someone else for an apartment building, doesn't fall in on itself. It's, it's usable building. It remains a, a focus of the town. It remains something that hopefully someday will be the center at this point of a municipal structure.
One of the things you talked about, which I thought was a laudable idea, in fact, if you go back to November and utilization discussion we had, the idea that a nonprofit could take that with the goal of creating an annual meeting space where it was big enough, because if you just have the first floor, you don't necessarily need an elevator anymore. So, and I, you know, I, maybe it's not possible, but just in terms of something that's motivating, something that you could aspire to, if your two hundred and fifty people said, this is our goal, we want to become a nonprofit, will Sangerville transfer this to us with the understanding that someday we're gonna cut the ribbon on a annual meeting place? I think that would be, I would support you one hundred percent if that's what you wanted to do. I would donate money. That is a, a rat, and you're not held to the same standards that we're held to.
Right, I get that issue too. Yeah, I know. It's not a tier one insurance.
You know, I wasn't being glum when I said, two grand apiece is a half a million dollars, but maybe a thousand dollars apiece gets us back in there for an annual meeting you know, if it's owned by a nonprofit.
And then the other issue, it, it, there are monies available through grants, through fundraising, that it doesn't need to be a nonprofit.
If you can get them.
If, if you can get them, and that's the whole thing is if, if, if it stays as a municipal building. It hypothetically, if we were able to get the town office back in that building, make it the center of municipal government, still had the committee, the community room, we can have our voting there. It doesn't preclude having people start beating the bushes for federal monies, state monies, main community foundation monies that still allow the building to be municipally owned. There are monies available. There are also monies available, nonprofit. But it, it, it doesn't exclude getting money if it stays a municipal building. It doesn't. There are monies available. It's, it's, it's.
Your percentage of, of getting those nonprofit grants over those municipal grants is not the same.
It's not, but it doesn't mean it's impossible. It, I am, I am a person who tends to go for optimism, tends to go with a can-do attitude. Yes, it's difficult for any kind of a grant. Just because it's a nonprofit doesn't mean you're gonna get it.
But it's definitely easier for a nonprofit.
But wait a minute, let's, the only thing that we're saying, we're using words like easier or whatever. That's not really how, what I'm saying. The percentage of being approval is far superior if you're a nonprofit than the town being a municipality getting awarded the funds for that building. A nonprofit is gonna be able to get more funds approved faster than the municipalities.
Uh, that, I don't, I'm, I would tend to disagree with that because I was just part of a process helping to write a grant for a municipality. They received the money for that grant, and it was pretty short timeline involved with it. Grant writing is complicated. It's time consuming. And after you do all that work, you throw it in and then do one of these kinds of things.
Well, I mean, we, we're trying all the time. We're competing with all these other towns.
I get it.
Municipal as far as for fire equipment, for fire trucks.
I get it.
For buildings.
I do, I do understand that.
Small town Sangerville, the store and all building, I think we would fall very low on the list when you look at everything else that's out there.
I don't know until we try. And, and there are people who have been talking with donations, and there seem to be people willing to do that. It has nothing to do with whether it's a municipality or a nonprofit. It's just, let's, let's.
But the difference in the standard is huge, and that's what you need. I mean, even if your success rate was equal between municipality and nonprofit, the standard that the municipality is held to makes it way more onerous to get this back up and operational.
I get it, especially for insurance purposes. I get it. I do get it. But it's not impossible. And I'm, you know, it's.
But if, it's more likely to happen if you take the other avenue.
Yes.
Part of the grant money, somebody has to be the bus driver. And if you go like to the USDA because they've been dispersing an awful lot of money for a while now. When you get in on that program, they are the bus driver. The USDA person would be one person. Cause that's who we had to deal with on fire station down in Corinna right now. And it is, it's a, it's painful.
It's a process.
Well, it's painful, but when you get there, I mean, if you're fortunate enough to get there, Bradley's gonna be coming right out. Bradley's fire station. Yeah, it's still dual.
But that's kinda what I was saying, though.
Somebody has to be the point person. They're gonna drive the bus.
Absolutely.
But when you throw all these projects out there, the way society is as a whole right now, if you have towns that are trying to get firefighter gear, or firefighter trucks, or fire stations.
Yep.
Or a brand new facility.
Yep.
That's gonna go higher in a list for an approval than restoring that massive square footage.
The Levi's store building in Corinna, they got over two million bucks.
But you, you've got to apply for it. You have to.
Oh, absolutely.
And that's what I was saying.
And when you start it, you're gonna be diligent and you're gonna stay on it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But, and if you apply for a building that is ten times the size of what you actually needed, you're probably less apt to get the funds.
Correct.
And that's what we would be doing. That building is easily ten X what we need for a town office. So.
For a town office maybe, but you said a meeting room.
Well, no, we're talking like this meeting.
Annual.
No, it's the same.
Yeah, but you're not gonna have time, you're not gonna have time to meet in here.
No, no, and we, we, we have it there for years.
So where is it gonna be?
We, we have, we have, at the Grace Bible, they have a community room. It's huge. We meet up there.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep. Yeah, it's just. It's kinda the same deal, you know, when you, you put all that in there. Do you wanna spend all that month's money? And use it once a year? Or do you use that money to pave the road? Or you do something else? I mean.
I know, all the, all the towns are struggling with that.
Yeah.
And we could, we could go to school too if we wanted to. That's just, this is more convenient.
You can always go to the school.
Yep.
We can, any day you want to.
No, 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 no.
No, but I mean, we, we've got access to those.
Yep.
We can use, I mean, that's where Guilford uses theirs, they use them.
Open to solutions, but it looks like we could be headed down a really dangerous path again.
Well, okay, then, when the discussion comes up, you need to lay out all your concerns clearly.
We, actually, we need you to persuade them, and you. If you've got 80 hands that are gonna go up, you're the guys that can control it.
We can't.
We haven't changed from November, we, we're not persuading any of you, well, maybe tonight.
I mean, we, we provided all this information over and over and over, we've had, like you, Jeff, I mean, you was in there when we met with the engineers. We've been very transparent with the numbers and what all this stuff is, but, and that's why I said what I said. It doesn't, it doesn't seem to matter what we present, because that's every time, that's the belief, oh, he doesn't know what he's talking about, you need to use somebody else, find somebody else, find somebody else. And they're just, it's not there.
Well, I think the figures, though, it's, it's always been, it's, it's going to cost us 10 million, it's gonna cost us 12 million, but there's been nothing, where did that number come from? Well, it came from an engineer walking through and saying, "Well, this is easily gonna cost," but there's been no cost breakdown.
No, there hasn't been an actual analysis because you had to pay money for it.
Yep, 75 grand.
Yeah, so, but if, if that's the road that you think the town should take.
Now we're pushed to doing that. Now, now, you know, we, now we're.
But that's when I, if, if that analysis tells us that the project is six, seven, eight million, do you think, at that point, do the two of you say, "Okay, that's a bridge too far"? We, Sangerville can't afford that, I mean, is there a number where you would say that?
I don't think it's up to us to say that.
No, I'm just asking your personal opinion.
No, that was just a personal question.
Just you personally, do you think there's a number, any number?
I think over the, if we look at it as a long-term, not something that's gonna happen in five years, not something that's gonna happen in eight years, but something that's a long-term, multi-phase project, I think it's a possibility.
That's the central hall model that we wanted to, to emulate.
Yeah, but you're talking about, I mean, this is how it pans.
How many years did that take?
10 years.
With, with grants, with fundraisers, with.
Well, that's not what she thought about. No, I know that, but the problem is.
We're getting right back to the committee that we formed with exactly all of that wording in it as far as modeling the central hall, because that's the only way we can afford it as a town, that's.
Don't we foster, I've said they couldn't afford it, and they have three times the horsepower we do.
And they spent no money on it, it was all fundraised. So, that's, so anyway.
So, if that's your platform, why didn't we walk Sam Hutchins through it and explore that often?
So, there's a lot of misinformation, there is a lot of misinformation, and I, Dennis Campell came to my house, and I asked him to share that information with anyone who would listen to him. I explained to him about Sam Hutchins, Sam Hutchins came to us and wanted to purchase that building.
Yeah, what, what impression do you have regarding Sam Hutchins?
I have no impression.
Well, why'd you bring it up?
Because in your January 3rd select board meeting, you brought his name up and said you owed it to him to put it on the board, what does that mean?
He made us an offer, he made us an offer, he, he made an offer to the town of Sangerville to buy a building. We can't give him, we can't honor his offer, we can't accept it.
And we also can't put it down and say, "Oh."
No, and we can't say, "No, we're not gonna tell anybody."
We can't say, "Oh, the town would never accept that," that is not for us to do. We owe it to Sam to bring it to the town, so the town can decide, yeah, this is.
Jeff, remember a few years ago, we had an offer on the town garage, I think the guy wanted to pay us a hundred grand or something? That wasn't our idea, he came to the select board and said, "You have a piece of property, I would like to buy it." It's, we are obligated to advance his, we didn't support the offer, we just, we just had to advance it. Sam's the same exact thing.
And he's been waiting a long time to, and, and it was suggested that we didn't put it on the special because it was going to confuse things, so we held him off again, he's been waiting. Um, but I sat down with Dennis Campell and explained that, exactly that.
But that's a perfect example of somehow we get, we're just doing our job. A gentleman walks in and says, "I'll write you a check for 20 grand for that building, I'm gonna put apartments in."
Tomorrow.
We're like, "Okay, well, we'll, we'll, we'll share it with the town eventually when we have a town meeting, that's, that's all we're doing."
It's been over a year that he.
Yeah, it's been over a year.
Um, that he, and we owe it to him to put it on, and to let the town decide. That's what we owe him.
So there's, that's another article.
Well, then, why were we confused about?
Simple question, I, I guess it goes back to the transparency, nobody knows.
Jeff, that tape runs every meeting. There's a lot of people that listen to this, we don't have to record that, we don't have to have the detail that's in our minutes. This select board in this town is more transparent than any other town in this area that I've gone online and read meetings and read or listened for things. So, it's not really, you're saying transparency, the really, the issue isn't transparency, it's if anybody actually has a concern that either wants to come to listen or wants to take the time to listen to that. I have people that live in Bangor that have recreation in our area, they listen to our meetings every time one's posted. But it's not transparency, it's whether or not people wanna get involved.
And here's the thing with regards to saying we owe it to Sam, it's an ongoing conversation. We, at one point, at one meeting, brought his offer to the table, we read it, I'm sure we probably read it into the record.
Yep.
And, and then it's been simmering, we have been kicking that can down the road, it's simmering and simmering, and so, you know, in our conversation of that night, we said, "We, Jesus, you know, we owe it to him to get that." You know, yes or no to him, let the town decide, so that's.
You know what I've noticed is when someone has, and any, this can happen to anybody, you, you have an impression of something that happened, and it turns out that your impression was wrong, that wasn't malicious, it's just wrong. When it's explained to people, you very rarely get, "Oh, man, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that."
Right.
There's never any conciliatory attitude, you know?
Yeah, gee, I'm sorry for.
Whoa, whoops, yeah.
Here's the problem you have, we've talked to a lot of people in town of Sangerville, and maybe transparent isn't the right word, but a lot of people have the same, what I'm addressing with you, a lot of people feel the same way, I'm hearing it over and over and over with people I talk to.
How do we, uh, we're doing the town's business, it's not our responsibility to educate the citizens of Sangerville. I mean, it's their responsibility to educate themselves, I mean.
You've had a series of objections, concerns, accusations of a lack of transparency, it turns out every single one of them, you were misguided. It was either actually in a town report, or it's in another place that we put, it was there, you just hadn't been able to find it, right? So, what you're saying is, you talk to lots and lots of people who are as uninformed as you are, that's really what you're saying.
And when you've got that many people uninformed, you have to ask yourself why.
How many people have listened to the last meeting?
350.
Huh, 350.
Mm-hmm, how long?
So, no, I'm just saying.
So you knew what happened last meeting, right? But the people who didn't, for them to come in and say, "Well, I didn't know you did that," you guys lack transparency. Well, you didn't listen to the meeting.
Right.
But it turns out everything that you were looking for, we've had up there.
A lot of times, the word transparency is used incorrectly.
I think it's used to disparage sometimes.
I think it's more, transparency doesn't mean that people agree with each other. Transparency just means that information is available, and if you disagree, that doesn't mean that it's not transparent.
That's correct.
Correct.
Transparency has become an overused word, the whole idea is the effort that's involved. I think there are many people who want an easier way than to sit down and listen to an hour and a half tape or to read minutes, the minutes have become much more detailed, thank you very much. That's, it's, it's not just, it's not just topic, 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 there are details, and that's an important piece. But I think, um, as just a little sidebar, people were very interested in having some kind of a quarterly newsletter that came to their mailbox, that just informed them about what's going on, what's going on with the fire department, what's going on with the historical society, what's going on with the school, with the school board and the select board.
We talked about that, we put.
Yeah, please don't drop that.
We put it in the budget to do that.
Okay, because I think that kind of thing, working toward reaching out to people in a simple way like that is going to stop this irritating kind of us against them kind of thing.
I don't believe there's any way you're gonna stop this.
Oh, yeah.
I think it's a measure, it's a measure that I think should be, um, approached as an effort to get this, this animosity to stop.
Let me give you an example, I was looking at a social media post, and it had to do with, something to do with the select board, I don't remember exactly the topic, but it was post after post after post, they're, they're, they lack transparency, but some even sounded like they were accusing us of taking funds, or, you know, I don't trust them, it's all. And all I did, all I did was post, here's the name of your select board members, here are their phone numbers. If you have any questions or concerns, anything that's going over the town, please feel free to call any one of us. Do you know how many calls we got?
I can guess.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
So those people aren't really concerned about anything that they're saying.
Well, they have a keyboard backphone, that's.
Sure, right, keyboard cowboys.
Right, but there were lots of them on there, right?
Because, yes, they, they feed each other.
And we get the same thing at that last meeting, somebody that I've never met, ever, ever, actually had to talk with, "We don't trust you." It's like, "I don't even know who you are."
Yeah.
But they don't ever call one, so when someone behaves that way, that tells me that they know that what they're saying has no merit. They're just giving us a hard time.
It's a knee-jerk reaction to passion, it's basically, and don't, and, and I just don't feed into it. There are people, in other words, it.
It's not, but the problem is, it's not us.
All we're saying is, here's our phone numbers, please give us a call.
I understand.
That's not feeding into it, that is informing.
What I'm, what I'm thinking is, that, that happened at the special town meeting, and that was, that was a meeting that was absolutely full of personal attacks and accusations, and there was misinformation as well that was, that was thrown. Backing off on the passion with tone, with word selection, and with body language, de-escalates, and then people can hear what you have to say, and I think that's important. Don't get into personal attacks, and, and that works, that works with the people too.
Right, and that's the problem.
And if I had the opportunity before town meeting to get up and encourage people to, to think with their head, not with their gut, to be civil, I would do it in a second.
But if someone shows up at a public meeting, at a weighty public meeting, where we're making a decision that will affect the budget for the next 100 years, and they tell a lie, you came in and basically chastise us for pointing out that we knew that person was lying. It's almost like pointing out the liar is worse than being the liar.
I think it's not so much.
Because there's a lot at stake.
I understand, and I'm sorry if you, if you thought that what I was doing as a chastising of the board, I was having a concern with everybody because the citizens were attacking you. And, and there were, and there were things that were going on from the board side to the citizens as well, that that's one reason I, I didn't say anything, is because I wasn't gonna be a party to the back-and-forth mudslinging. I want to deal with the facts, I want to deal with the issues, not with personalities, not with accusations, not with, "You said this then, and now you're saying this now," just.
That does matter, though.
Here are the facts.
And those are our facts, you said this then, and you said this.
The one thing, Diane, that's, that probably bugs me the most is, nobody wants to think about those 103 people.
I do think about those.
But I, I just don't think they do, they don't, we have so many, we are the poorest town in our area, our median age is increasing every year, it's not going down, it's going up, um, I just don't get it. It's, everybody thinks, "Oh, let's go, it's 440,000, we're gonna spend it." Well, what about all these citizens that, all of our neighbors, they can't pay the taxes they got?
It's interesting, the only thing that people get angry with us about, essentially, and I, I can go back to a lady who wanted the town to pay for a snow fence, because it blew, and it's always people who feel like we should grant them access, access to other people's money, and they get furious with us because we're protecting that, and it's, it's, it's the only thing that gets people wound up.
I understand that you've got a very difficult job, I would never want it, I don't know how you keep going up for. But it's, and it, and what I'm, I will keep talking about is, when we, when we talk about things, let's talk about them as adults, and just, and talk about it without attack, without raised voices, and I don't know, I would like to be the civility police on the side, and if someone in the town meeting starts going, I'd just hold the flag up and say.
Well, to that end, uh, I had a number of citizens who've come to me and felt like the moderator in the special town meeting was not balanced, uh, some found that it was offensive. Uh, and from listening to your meetings, I know the intention is to try to make him moderator again. I would suggest if you really are about civility, and I trust that you are.
I am.
Then you should promote, let someone completely apart from both parties be moderator. Unfortunately, just like a misguided article, if enough hands go up, you get whoever you want for moderator.
Hmm, that's true.
So, unless he is encouraged to, to have someone completely impartial, it's probably gonna happen again, and
And we're gonna have this same situation.
That's not what you want.
I want, I want the anger to stop.
Absolutely.
Perfect.
I do want the anger to stop.
Then we need a moderator that is not biased, that has.
Not even any appearance of bias, you can't collect signatures for an, an article and then preside over that meeting, particularly we have competing articles.
At this point, three, right?
Minimum.
Well, everyone, I think.
Well, I mean, in terms of town office, town hall kind of thing, I'm, I'm hearing three, Sam.
Yeah, but even, even open animosity, I mean, the comments are very much like, we're, I mean, if I listen to your meetings, the transition from November to today with regard to the select board is like, well, it's, like I, I said, it's, everybody says Angerville because it rhymes with Sangerville, it's really not, it's dysfunctional there, I mean, it's amazing.
Have you really, have, you guys, either one of you guys listened to your meetings after you've had them? You should.
You should, it's, we, it's, it's a very different experience than when you're actually in the meeting, because we've, we've got some experience, it's not, not all good, we've done it, uh, but you, you get a, it's, it's, because much of what you're saying is not reflected in your meetings.
Correct.
They're very hostile.
And it's not only towards us, it's actually been towards other citizens.
Well, that was addressed after you made it known, that was addressed at our next meeting, in terms of, of.
It's okay, it's just, it's more interesting than anything.
It's not okay, it, it isn't, okay, and, and.
I see it towards the window.
And Jeff was very good about that, at the very next meeting, it's, you know, table, the cards were on the table, and it was a reality that needed to be addressed, and it was addressed.
I think too, if you're trying to pull a moderator from, from the.
We can't.
Citizens of the town of Sangerville, it doesn't matter, everybody's gonna be biased, and if.
No, that's not true.
That's not true, Jeff.
And there don't need to be a citizen either.
No, no, I, I think we need to have someone.
Can you get what I'm saying?
No, I didn't.
What I'm saying is, everybody's got an opinion, and to the end of that opinion, everybody would have a tendency, I would say, to lean towards their side of the opinion, and if they come from the town of Sangerville, they're probably gonna have an opinion.
They don't have to come from the town of Sangerville.
Theoretically, everybody would have a bias.
We could get, we could get, we could get a ta, an attorney.
Yep.
To come and be moderator, there are rules for moderators, and, and that attorney wouldn't have to even know any elements of the articles, and they could run the meeting, because they know the rules. The la, the moderator, Mr. Davis, it doesn't matter, uh, in the last meeting, in the, the opinion of many citizens demonstrated bias, so if we do it again, I don't think we should expect a different outcome, that's all, and it is very.
He knows that, he, he knows that if he has a biased opinion, he's not supposed to be moderator, he's actually supposed to be the one.
It's incumbent upon him to, to identify the fact that he.
Even the appearance.
That's right, it's, it's.
Doesn't matter what's in your heart, if, if there's a, a reasonable appearance, in other words, "I collected signatures for this article," that's a reasonable appearance, that's enough. Doesn't matter what's in your heart, if, if there's a reasonable appearance, in other words, I collected signatures for this article, that's a reasonable appearance, that's enough. So that's how it works.
And I mean, as much as you can say, well, I'll be totally equal and unbiased, it's, you will have citizens that say that it's.
Well, particularly if you demonstrated that you weren't in December.
That's why I was going with that, is no matter what you do, somebody's gonna stand up and say, that guy had bias. If you guys hire an attorney, somebody's gonna stand up and say, oh, they paid him to do this.
Well, that's, that's the same guy.
No matter what you do, there's gonna be bias.
I, I understand that, just like some people say, engineers don't know any better than my local mason. But that doesn't mean they're right, if we hire an attorney, and I, and we haven't talked about.
No, 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 we haven't.
But they're going to follow the rules, they don't even know what's in the article until it comes up. So we could get a representative from another town that doesn't really care about the outcome in Sangerville, and I'm sure they'd do a great job. And it would be fair to everyone. But we, we already know what happened in December, so we don't have to guess. So, you guys, I do appreciate you feeling, this discussion with us is.
Yeah.
It's appreciated.
It's good to talk, it is good to talk about it.
Anything more?
Can I go?
You may, you may.
I am wobbling from.
Jeff? Okay, uh, let's, we're running out of battery, so let's.
Before you sign off.
We, we still got stuff.
We got one thing to do.
Okay, I don't wanna say we're still in a new business, because.
Yep.
Okay, so we do need to make some sort of decision with an auditor.
Yeah, uh, what's, so we have resolved the anomaly, is that fair to say?
No, we have not, we have got to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
We've kinda hit a brick, we've tried to contact the current auditor, Jeff has reached out, I have reached out.
I'm sorry to interrupt, we are nearly out of batteries, so I, I would like to just take a quick break. I take a motion to change the battery, it's, it's six twelve, and we're gonna recess for a second.
And he was, he called off.
Okay, fresh batteries, let's try to finish this up. Are we still on the town manager's report?
We are at the auditor.
The auditor, okay, thank you, Jeff, sorry about that.
Uh, we've been back and forth with the current auditor, have not got answers. We need to have help, we've got to a point that we can't move forward with anything.
So can we stop for a second, when you say the current auditor, is that the one that we used last year, or is that? Okay, that's what I.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, the lady that I use for Kingsbury, I spoke to her again. She said depending, you know, she could do it in a couple weeks, and she wants to come up, sit with us, go through things, she's eighty two hundred dollars.
Okay, so you're talking, yeah, you're, exactly, you're talking about because of this discrepancy.
Yes.
Okay, my question is.
Are you talking about discrepancy, or you're just talking about the year-end audit that we always have to do every year anymore?
The year-end audit, completely.
Okay, so it's kind of both, I mean, we're scheduled for our year-end audit, and we know we have this discrepancy, so it's.
Right, because, I, I, you know, I, my thought is to go right with a forensic accountant and find out what's up.
Well, and, and a couple things that I have also discovered, the general assistance reports, there were a few that weren't filed. So we didn't get reimbursed from the general assistance, I worked with them and the state, and I was able to go back and file those reports, so that should be fine.
Does that create a discrepancy?
It, no, it doesn't.
Okay.
Because that's just a reimbursement factor.
Right, so, that's not narrowing the gap, yeah.
No, I can't seem to get any further.
So just, because one time this, we looked at this, and the bank said we had more money than we thought we had. And then it switched, the bank said we had less money than we thought we had, where do we stand today?
I honestly don't know.
Okay, all right.
I can tell you what is on the bank statement, but that's all I can tell you.
Does it still go back and forth like that?
So, and Trio, they took our data, they sent me back the answer, they can't give us any sort of definite idea. Because they don't have access to our bank accounts, so they can't run tests on it.
What do we need to do to do that, because to me, I'm still stuck in, I'm, I am, I'm stuck. If you have an error that repeats, then that tells me, okay, that's an audit issue, that's an auditor issue. You know, it's, or, not the right word, but a clarable issue.
Right.
You know what I mean, somewhere, we've got something in there that we're not finding, we can't find, and that's where the auditor is gonna help with that. But the problem we're having is this, our problem is changing month to month.
Right.
The number's not staying consistent, the plus and the minus isn't the same.
Yeah, that's switching to plus to minus, I don't understand how that.
That has to be system related.
The swing is.
Oh, it's like, it's a.
Yeah, it's so big that it's a negative one time and then a positive the next time, but it could be the same swing.
Yeah.
I think, but is, is, the auditor is the only one that's gonna find that, or do you connect the bank with Trio?
That's what I'm wondering, what does that mean to do that, what do we have to do?
Okay, so.
For Trio to do what they need to do with our accounts, so they can, because it kinda sounds to me like that's what they wanna do. Is they, okay, this is the information we have, I need to look at your account, so I can take my numbers, your numbers, and measure.
See, see what's going on.
Right.
I don't know, I did not.
Why wouldn't we wanna do that?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we can, I've never been faced with this.
I mean, they asked for it.
They, they didn't, they just said they couldn't do it, they couldn't run tests on it because they didn't have access to our banking information.
That doesn't necessarily mean that, they weren't necessarily saying, would you give it to us? They're saying, it's because we don't, we can't.
Right, right, it doesn't mean they will.
And we still don't have an audit, we can't find the contract yet.
Right, exactly, I got it, I put it off an email for him. So.
But I, I think I would like to have to reach out to Trio and say, hey, this is what you're telling me.
Yeah.
Are you saying that if I can grant you permission to my accounts, can you run these tests to try to find it?
Okay.
And if they say yes, what does that mean for us? I'm assuming we probably have to sign so they could, but.
Yeah, I would think so, I would think.
But the sooner we get that done, and then, I mean, we can't even have town meeting without an audit, period.
You can. Ideally.
Looks like we might.
Yeah, I have a letter in the town report stating that they're in the process of working it, but that's from the other auditor.
Well, the only bad part is, is it's been.
The only thing is, you know, when we first came on, when I first came on board, we wanted to have a different auditor.
Right.
Because Patrick was leaving, Lorna was leaving, and we haven't done that, so we're still with the same auditor. But we don't have a contract with that auditor that, that we can find, so we have.
Does, have you asked the auditor for their copy of the?
And, and, and nothing, nothing, what did they say?
Did you send anything back in the email today?
It was in your packet, in your book, they, they said that they don't believe that they have one, but she was also going to check with another lady.
Oh my god, is it?
They're working on the year end, but we have nothing going forward.
Right, what do we pay the other auditor?
Um, thirty, sixty five hundred, I think, is what the other auditors, so, and many could.
Say that again, they're working on our year-end audit?
But we don't have a contract going forward.
Oh, okay, but that's for next year.
But we can, we can contract with them going forward.
We could, yes.
If we could.
Our contract for, ended on December thirty first twenty three.
Sure.
I did find that.
Right, but they're supposed, with that, they're supposed to provide a year-end audit, right?
Okay, I don't know, because I haven't.
Is that a question?
Yeah, right, his answer is.
It's kind of both, I'm, I'm pretty confident, that's why he went on December thirty first, and they would provide the year-end audit.
But what if you weren't on a calendar year?
Right, they wanted to know.
They want all the assets for the year end, that we've done any paving or any structural improvements.
So they're, they're working on the year end, correct. So they're gonna end that year, and they're gonna provide the audit from, of all twenty three.
Correct.
So we, but once they do that, that's what we need to have town meeting.
Right.
But they're still not answering us, so.
That's a difference. So in theory, the auditor is working on year end, but we're not being able to communicate.
Correct.
What's really gonna be interesting is when they do complete, complete the year end, if they find this, if they don't find this.
So I did talk to a person yesterday for a meeting, and she was gonna talk to this other person, which is the email that she provided, and see where we're going.
Yeah, because we've had them in here in February, in the past, a couple years ago.
Yep.
So we're talking just as far as cost, what, twenty two hundred dollars, twenty some odd dollars?
Or if you've already paid, you've already paid the other auditor.
Right, no, I know that.
But we're also saying, what are we going, what are we?
What are we gonna do for twenty four?
Right.
This audit that we have right now has not taken any, well, they've taken some of the twenty twenty three information. And they're working on that, but they're still not answering us concerning the check, checkbook balances. They have yet to come out, even though they have said, well, we'll set a date, we'll come out, that was a month ago. I still have not heard from them about coming and sitting with me and getting through the issues that we have.
Never saw a group, never saw an auditing group.
You know, and we're all waiting for the audit so that we can budget, but our current auditor doesn't seem to be.
And it doesn't sound like we have a good solution.
No.
Not yet. Like I said, I'll have to call again this week and see what this other girl. And this really has, this is not addressing the discrepancy, that's a separate issue.
That's separate.
So you're gonna, regarding the discrepancy, you're gonna see what Trio was implying with that. If there's some sort of connectivity that we can create, we're very willing to do that.
Right, okay.
Okay, unless there's some pitfall that, that they're gonna make, uh, some cautionary thing, I can't imagine what it would be.
No, I can't either, so I think that's a good way to go, if they're, if they're saying, yeah, we can do it as long as we have access to your files.
And we have to sign something, or with the bank to allow them to have that information, sign away.
Yeah, yeah.
But with regard to the, the audit, we need to find a, a more reliable source, is that? We'll resolve this one. Yeah, okay, all right, all right, anything else on that?
So, okay.
Anything else?
No, just, that was just basically.
More pressure.
Where we need to.
More pressure.
Where, where we need to have some direction, I guess, so.
Okay.
I would actually.
And you know, you don't have.
Milo just went through this, they opened up their town meeting, I think they had a couple of generic-y questions.
Yep.
Then they got into the, any, the very first line item to do with the budget. Making the motion to approve, second conversation, amend the article, we don't have an audit, postpone the meeting.
Oh.
They basically tabled everything.
They tabled the entire meeting and they all walked out.
Where was this?
Milo, second year in a row.
Oh geez.
So this is.
But they got fed with funds.
I don't think we ever had an audit done before we got for to have that, that town meeting, because we always had it third week in March.
So we've always had ours, and the only reason why this year in particular, why I want that audit, is we have too many, like this, we talked about it tonight. Four, you know, we really need to know, when you put a number out there, this is what we really have as a town, and you start adding all these big numbers in there.
Yeah, we've got, between the two articles, it's almost half a million dollars, it will, it will tap us up, so being off a little bit is a big deal now.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, the other side of it is too, is, you know, we thought of our budget process, we've been generating that income off from that.
Yep.
Something else that, you know, nobody wants to think about, that's gone forever.
Right, that's.
That alone is huge.
Okay, uh, anything else?
No, no.
Thank you, uh, road commissioner, all good, select board concerns? Well, A, I, I think, I think we gotta get on maybe a, a more frequent meeting schedule, we know we wanna do a mailer.
Yes.
Okay, and I know next week, you and I can noodle kind of off of the side. That mailer is gonna be informational primarily around these two petition items. Uh, I, I think tonight's meeting actually is gonna be good fodder for some of that.
Right.
And then we, we wanna have an informational meeting, I, I kind of imagine the mailer as an introduction to that date. And what the topics are gonna be, and we, we get, need to try to express how important it is that you come and get this information. And then the town meeting, I think all of those should be pretty close together. So I've got the calendar here.
We also need to have.
What's that? Engineering. Well, let's, go ahead, what were you gonna say?
We need to have the town for seven days prior to town meeting.
Okay, I know that.
Which means it has to go to the printer before.
We need the audit, so we can get the numbers.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and what were you gonna ask? About the goal. Yeah, do we wanna do a full-blown engineering, and that's seventy five hundred bucks?
Seventy five thousand dollars.
No, seventy five hundred dollars. When I said you, when I said.
That was seventy five hundred.
That, that's just, that's not a blueprint.
No, no.
That's a, let's poke a few holes, tell you what you really got, what we think. He'll, he'll put some holes, because he's gotta see what the structure is, and then we'll do a whole thing, talk the ball. Right, but you're not ending up with blueprints like the ones that got stolen.
My big fear that we have right now is, until we have an audit, you don't know how much we've already spent out of contingency.
I totally agree with you, but I don't think there's a more important number than what this guy is gonna give us.
I don't disagree with that, I just.
Contingency is for the two percent, what, is it twenty five percent?
No, it's just.
Contingency is for anything the way the articles were approved last year. If those are, those numbers in your trio.
Yeah.
For what we spent don't equal, so.
Some negatives, okay.
As a whole, so, I, I mean, like, Article Five was these things. When you take all those buckets and you add them together, they should equal, as that was written.
The fire department, two years in a row.
Yeah.
Yeah, they overspent the budget.
They overspent the budget, so we had to go, now, that didn't come out of contingency, because they had an article. We had to go back in town meeting and said, will you approve this over expenditure, and they always do.
One year we did.
Well, I thought it was two years in a row, but.
Yes, but the first year, we took it out of contingency.
Okay.
So that's why we have fifteen thousand dollars, it's already approved for us, so that if we do a budgetary error, we have fifteen, we're allowed a fifteen thousand dollar mistake, basically.
Okay.
But where do we stand on, on, just, you know.
I'll have to, I'll have.
Town funds, running the town, I mean, this is an aspect of, you know, town office.
Yeah, it's very, very important.
I mean, if we don't have real numbers.
That's right, we can't.
And I agree what you said earlier, if we give them real numbers, there's still gonna be about eighty people that stand up and say, that's not true, but.
Right.
I, I still think we gotta try. Done up dual diligence. Yeah.
Yeah.
We're not making this stuff up, even though we get accused of it over and over, but. I'm, I'm leaning towards getting a real number, but.
Okay, so what I can work on tomorrow is, I can figure out, now I understand your negatives, and figure out where we stand with that. I'll work on that tomorrow morning.
Okay, so if you can shoot us an email tomorrow.
Okay.
With what you find.
Compared to what was approved.
Correct.
Okay.
And if you need a hand or whatever tomorrow, just talk.
Okay.
Here's the thing.
I would just feel better, if some of that, at least, we could hit that number.
Well, and then, we also had questions on the, on the road money, back and forth, that was a question, Sam is digging into that, so. Um, to, to see where we stand with that, and with the, um, memorial law. The, yeah, the monument law, she's looking at those two things.
That one should be pretty straightforward.
But not really.
You'd be surprised.
Well, I mean, we have an audit from the end of last year.
Right.
That said, this is what was there, and then you have the town report that says what we spent.
Well, she's going back through some other stuff as to how it got set up and how it arrived, and, so she's digging a little further, but we'll, we'll work with that tomorrow. As far as you're over it.
So I have the calendar, are we, are we thinking a weekend, a Saturday, or are we thinking a weekday for the meeting?
I think you're gonna have to do a weekend.
Saturday, not a Sunday, we never do Sundays.
No, no.
Right.
So it's, the twenty seventh is, the twentieth is too close, so if, if we work backwards from the twenty seventh, can you do the twenty seventh?
You're talking town meeting?
Yes. I do it on Monday night like everybody else.
Oh, wow.
I, I, this, I fully agree with you, I would love to have this meeting during the week. I really hate the thought of having it on the weekend, because it's just gonna go on forever.
So I have no problem.
But I think you have to make this as accommodating as you can.
Right.
Because you already know, you've got a lot of people coming to vote it one way. So I, as much as I don't want to, I would steer away from the weeknight to try to get the rest of the populace that we can educate to be there.
And, and, yeah, go ahead, I, we don't need to.
So, but it, so.
Saturday's great.
All right, so then there are two Saturdays that are only realistic, in my opinion, I could be wrong, it's the twenty seventh or the Fourth of May? Because the twentieth is too close.
Right.
Right?
I'm thinking the Fourth of May, to get your town report, you gotta get your articles in there.
I gotta find out when I'm going, I'm gonna be away, but I don't, I gotta, I have to look at my calendar.
Okay, we don't have to make this decision tonight, but once we, whether it's the twenty seventh or the fourth, then we can work back our information meeting, our mailing, because all of that comes. our mailing, because all of that comes ahead of it, okay?
Yeah, we want it in close succession.
And if, if we need to have a meeting this Friday or next Monday, we can have as many as we need, but these are the kind of stuff we need to nail down.
What, um, what time are you thinking on the twenty-seventh? If we did the twenty-seventh?
I'm, if we do it on a Saturday, I'm thinking one o'clock.
In the afternoon?
Yep.
That should get me out of AIG. AIG, I gotta empty out.
Yeah, let, let people have their lunch and show up.
Right.
Yep.
So we need to come up with articles. Are you coming up with articles that you're gonna give us or are we gonna do this?[1725.84]